All right, good evening. It's the East Line Board of Selectmen Special Meeting for the purposes of Budget Review. East Line Town Hall, upper meeting room, it's March 3rd, 2025, and about 5:33. Okay. Want to rise and recite?
The diligence to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we've been doing a lot of work on the capital improvement plan. Committee has been meeting, and we're finally at the end of that process. In other years, we've looked at the capital improvement plan at the end when we're all tired, but I thought it'd be a good idea tonight, we'll reverse procedure a little bit. We'll look at it first thing. And we have the 10-year and the current year capital improvement plan. So, Kevin, would you mind giving us a high-level run-through?
Yes, sir. I'm just trying to pull. Did you have another copy made?
Sandy, can you grab two copies right over there for?
Yeah, you just go.
Did, I think, and maybe a copy for Dawn as well? I don't know if you got a?
I got one.
Yeah.
Oh, you get a fresh copy?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, thanks so much.
And for the audience, there's also extra copies over there.
Great, thank you.
And for the listeners at home, this was just uploaded to our town website under Budget Documents. So, let me just share my screen. So, if you want to switch it to the PIP wireless presentation there?
On the 10-years? 109, 257. No, 109, 257.
So, I got the right, that's it.
Yeah.
Everyone good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll do the current year first. The current year just says, Capital Project Budget Proposal Fiscal Year 25-26. It's the one on the screen here as well, for those at home. So, what we have here is a list of all the town's capital projects, inclusive of the Board of Ed. The only department's not included in this listing is Water and Sewer, right? Because that goes through the Water and Sewer Commission, even though they bond through the town. So, just looking at the capital projects that were approved, in the General Government Section, or I shouldn't say approved, this is the recommended package from the CIP Committee that's met about a dozen times over the last approximately four months. And it's going through this with you, the departments. That committee is made up of two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the Board of Ed, one member, I'm sorry, one member of the Board of Ed, two members of the Board of Finance, and then citizen representatives from each of those respective boards. So, I think there was nine on the committee altogether. And so, going through the projects, first one, Senior Center Bus. State of Connecticut pays for 80% of the bus. We have to pay for the other 20%, so that's the 30,000. One project that may have some movement that we're still looking into is tax collector security measures, hardening that office to add, increase security. As everyone knows, we had a vehicle that was taken out of our parking lot. And with that came questions of security across the entire town hall campus, as well as all-town properties. So, we're looking at that right now, so we'll see what happens with that particular line item. Other projects that were approved, the assessment revale. Every year, we put approximately 75,000 into a reserve fund. So, when we revale every five years, there's money in there for the revale, and then any subsequent Board of Assessment activities. Office Furniture Replacement Program. We have earmarked the planning in Tax Collector's Office to receive updated furniture. Brookside Farm, building improvements, windows, roofs, et cetera. This is to maintain the Brookside Farm, which is right next to the community center for that facility right there. We have a curator that's been in that role for approximately two years, and she's really taking the bull by the horns over there and bringing that building into a, that property really into a nice shape.
Kevin, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I know that some of the activities over at Brookside are tied to LoSiP. That is present in this budget?
That is in the current, like, so we're looking at fiscal '25-26, which is really fiscal year '26. These are all what we are going to be approv, or, you know, anticipated to be approving. The LoSiP funds you're talking about were approved last year.
So, just to get an understanding of how this works. So, let's take the Brookside Farm, Building Improvements, Useful Life '25, go all the way across. It's 25 grand.
Yeah.
So, if that was tied to something else, does that, does that represent at the end where it says LoSiP Funds 447-500 at the very end of this? Am I jumping ahead?
So, that, the LoSiP you're thinking of, I think, was last year. There was approximately 100,000, I think, set aside for LoSiP for Brookside Farm. And before we can use LoSiP Funds for Brookside Farm, we have to have SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, do a couple of studies.
Okay.
There's an infrastructure study, and then a historical significance study, I believe. I'm not exactly sure the second one.
And we voted on those, or on one of them.
You what?
We voted on one of them to approve.
Correct. So, that's where we're using some of that money for. In the meantime, those projects are going to take, those studies are going to take upwards of two years to do.
So, this is just 25 grand flat out that we pay?
Replacing, I think she's earmarked some of this for replacing some of the wood on the barn that's starting to dry rot and things like that, some decking that's falling apart. So, nothing that's like, you know, we're not knocking out walls, anything like that. It's just really repairs and maintenance. But it really, it's a pool, you know, a reserve account set aside. So, when this building does need, you know, crack a window, things like that, there's money set aside.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. You know, if you have questions throughout this, just, you know, just interrupt me, I'll keep talking. So, Infrastructure IT. There's five projects we moved forward with of the eight projects. The other eight projects, the first, Dark Fiber. We took Dark Fiber up because Dan Cleary received a grant from the State of Connecticut to implement that, so we were able to take that out of the budget. And then, just updating the town's cybersecurity readiness and bringing us up to the 22nd century, 21st century, with some, you know, advanced IT.
But the recommendation for that is not to do it, the Dark Fiber?
We are doing it, we got a grant to do it.
Oh, okay, so that's why it's coming in.
So, that's why it's coming in. So, everything, everything in IT that's coming up, so the Dark Fiber that came out is paid for by a grant. The townwide computer replacement was moved into the general fund, right? Because nowadays, computers aren't really capital projects. Computers are, you know, about $1,000. So, really, what this is to do is to replace the older computers that are on Microsoft 10 and 11, I believe, and move them, migrate them all to the new Microsoft 12, I believe it is. And the reason being, old computers that are not hosted with 12 are no longer, you can't get customer support for them, and there's, there's all sorts of things. And then they charge for every computer, there's a monthly fee, I think it was like $32, which doesn't seem like a lot, but when there's, you know, a couple hundred computers across town hall, that really digs into the IT's budget. And those computers are more of on a replacement program. $1,000 a computer, that's not really a capital item, so as we advance, you know, that's more of an operating. And then, just the townwide server replacements at the PD. That was, he had no plans of doing that this year. That's really a $70,000 project. So, next year, when we look at that, just expect to see a $70,000 line item for that project. It's just, it's better use of cash. Instead of having it sit in an account for a year, there's other priorities, you know, there are other projects that need that cash today. So, it was just a shuffling of, shuffling of the deck there. So, are there any questions with IT?
I'm just a little floored. Is 50 years is the useful life of Dark Fiber? I don't even know what Dark Fiber is, but it lasts 50 years?
So, from my understanding of Dark Fiber, there's, you know, like fiber-optic cable around town, you know, if I get internet service through that. Dark Fiber is a dedicated line specifically for the town. So, the company will come out and run a Dark Fiber cable, however, we, you know, ideally between the buildings, to connect them all into one network. Julie Wilson might be able to speak a little more to this. But, so, it's dedicated fiber strictly for the town. So, currently, a lot of the fiber we're using is on state fiber, so we're sharing, and the problem becomes bandwidth. When you think of all of the gigabytes and terabytes of data from the cameras, from the police cars, that all, you know, we only get a certain allotment of that fiber. So, this is really dedicated fiber strictly for the town, so there's not, the only constraint we have is our capabilities. How'd I do?
I think it sounds great.
The reason they call it Dark Fiber is there's no other light source on that fiber but ours. We're not sharing, you know, it works by photons instead of electrons. And so, there's no, no one else's photons, light particles on our fiber, so it's Dark Fiber. And?
I think if Dark is dedicated.
Yeah, dedicated, yeah, but it's dedicated to us.
Sounds a lot cooler to say Dark Fiber, though.
Dark Fiber.
Dedicated Fiber. Dedicated Fiber sounds like cereal.
So, before we leave that, did you say that there was a grant for this?
Correct.
It's totally covered by the grant?
Correct. And there's a second phase to the grant to connect, I think, the rest of the buildings. So, I think this particular grant we received, the 44,000, I think, was just to connect two buildings together. The grant we received was about $100,000 to connect a few more buildings. There's a second tranche to this grant we're hoping to get for approximately 300,000, I think it was, to connect the remaining buildings into the network. Correct. Got it correct.
And an important aspect of it is it's circular instead of a star network. So, we enter that Dark Fiber, we can reach the other buildings from either direction, rather than, so it'll, it'll be more secure, and we'll be able to?
There's two prongs.
Yeah, because there's a circle, you can go counterclockwise and clockwise around that circle to reach the other buildings if there is an interruption in that circular Dark Fiber. So, that's an important aspect of our security and resilience. It's a big deal.
Do they have any other questions for IT?
So, the 44,000 is our contribution?
Nope.
No.
No, we took ours out, we took it out.
So, the whole thing is gone from this.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah.
If you look at the last column, you can see what is being?
Jason, at the top of her page, on the top of her worksheet, what's the as-of date?
Well, it's at the top.
Sandy, can you grab her new copy?
She has a different version than what I have.
I think she's got the original version that was put in that book about two months ago.
She's missing the last column, and she's missing the CIP Committee.
Oh, okay.
I've got it underneath, I think.
Let's make sure you got the ladies' grades.
Just make sure, yeah.
Yeah, just take that one. There you go. Take those two.
That's the one.
So, I'll take those two, that's all. Read these, and this is the one we're working on, sorry.
There's only about 12 versions of this floating around.
I know, I think I've got all 12.
Comes out here, and also disappears from our calendar.
So, if there's ever, if there was ever a, an example of the need for a budget software, this is it. So, but we could talk about that later. So, any other questions for IT? All righty, we'll move to Emergency Management. Only three items in Emergency Management this year. The tower, we call it Phase Two, but really, it's an additional appropriation for the tower. Originally, it was budgeted for 300,000, and the quotes we've been receiving are in the $400,000 range. So, the other 105,000 is to, you know, fulfill that project, right? The other piece of the project. Public Safety Communications Infrastructure. There's aging infrastructure at the various towers throughout town, and that equipment needs to be replaced. The average age, I believe, is from 2007? Is that correct?
Yes, but it should have been replaced in 2018, so it's definitely forward.
So, and we, and we have put that forward for the State of Connecticut to help us fund that. So, we will, we'll hear back from that.
And this is the first item on here that ends up in the bonding proposal.
It just by happenstance, just by the, yeah, that's in bonding, yep.
10-year bond, yep, that's right.
And the reason why it's in 10-year, not 20-year, is because this, the useful life of a lot of this equipment is 15 years. So, you're rather bonded for a less period of time than, you know, you don't want to replace equipment that you're still paying for.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the other piece of equipment here is the drone base station and training. So, the drone is approximately $10,000-ish, and then there's the base station for it, and then the training for a few police officers and firefighters to become drone-certified to actually use this drone, correct?
Yes.
Beautiful.
If they leave the force or something, is that certification transferable, or would we have to invest more money?
I think it's the FAA certification, right?
You have to be, each individual needs to be trained. Correct. But we also have the, it's okay for me to speak, the?
So, that way, the people at home can hear you.
We also have, under the Region Four, Emergency Support Function, Emergency Management. We do have funding available there on a regular basis, which would cover the cost of training.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so are we good with Emergency Management? All right, next, on to Police. So, we have the two replacement police vehicles, $160,000. That's paid for by private duty funds. Investigative equipment for approximately $10,000. Security upgrades at the public safety building for 25. Camera upgrades, accident reconstruction.
Could you speak to that one real quick?
Accident reconstruction?
Yeah, because I see the Department requested 10,000, and the CIP Committee said, how about 17,000? And then that's all there for 27.
That's the camera upgrades. So, the camera originally was a $10,000 ask, and then once we started looking at the, you know, the system?
Because we just got into this vendor, and the, and the deal expired, basically, right?
So, this, right, this one would? So, it originally had a place marker in there for 10,000, and talking to the vendor who currently deals with the system that's at the police department and also other areas in town, looked at a few, I just don't want to put it out there, but a few different areas at the PD that needed upgrading. So, the additional funds is what CIP had recommended to bring that up to basically cover the?
Thank you. And then a couple trailers, one for a digital sign, and the other Speed Trailer, some tactical team equipment, which is part of a regional, regional effort, and then the administrative vehicle. Is there any questions for Police?
Does that digital sign trailer capture data? And that can be shared with, like, Public Works, because I know they have a couple of them.
The digital sign?
The digital sign is just like when, you know, around, like, East Lime Day, I deploy one right here at Main Street in Pennsylvania Ave. So, you see them on the highway also, right? So, it tells you, you know, Main Street, no parking, East Lime Day from this time. That's that type of sign there. The, the Speed Trailer that is attached to it, however, that will give us the data that we're looking for.
Okay.
Because currently, right now, what we get from Public Works, from the stationary sign?
So, this would be like your own separate thing like that?
Correct, we can hook up to the back of a truck. If we have a neighborhood complaining, hey, we have Speed Trailers, right now, I have to put them into a queue, which is basically a waiting list, to have Public Works whenever they have one free up out there. This way, I could have an officer sign, hey, go put that down Giant's Neck Road today. We've had this many complaints. Put it out there as a warning, collect the data, figure out the best times of day where the most infractions are occurring, and go from there.
Is it just Speed? Does it also require, record, like, decibel levels?
It does not do decibel levels, just Speed.
Apologize, they have a lot of questions.
No, it's good, it's fine.
Very curious.
Yeah, we've only spent about 30 hours on the CIP Committee in all these, so we have plenty of, plenty of answers. So, does everyone go with Police? All right, moving on to Fire. Going through the list here, the apparatus reserve was cut, and that was really after reviewing the 10-year and all the requirements, or requests, I should say, to refurb and replace. The 500,000, we would put it in this year, and next year would be depleted. So, it's probably just better to bond next year and use the cash for more shovel-rotty projects for this year. So, it was really just an allocation of some of those resources. The fire boat, one of the bigger items in the budget for this year is, was the need for a fire boat. So, about quarter of a million dollars for a fire boat. A utility truck to tow that boat and the current boat, as well as some of the other pieces of equipment we have, rescue equipment. So, we recently purchased a new fire truck that came in within the last year. There's some pieces of equipment we would like to put on that truck. And if anyone has any questions on exactly what those pieces of equipment are, I can get them for you, but it's not in my, I can't think about it off the top of my head. But jaws of life, you know, those inflatable bags, things like that, you know, all the extrication tools, I think they're called, heavy, yeah. Replacing tires on current vehicles. Normally, this would not be a capital project, but due to the number of tires that is needed to be replaced across the entire fleet, we thought it advisable, instead of ballooning the operating budget for a one year, it was better to put this in a capital project, just get it done. There's six vehicles, five or six vehicles that need replacements. The tires on these vehicles are past their, not only useful life, but the NFPA standard for those vehicles. I believe it's a seven-year replacement for first-line vehicles, and five of the vehicles have tires that are older than that at the moment. Scuba cylinders, that's an annual, you know, change out of those bottles. Turnout gear. Turnout gear, assorted hoses and firefighting equipment. So, if you see, there's negative 70,000, negative 20,000, and plus 75,000 in discussions with the fire department in order to give them a little more flexibility on what they need to buy with the funds. We took away the turnout gear and assorted hoses and pushed it into firefighting equipment. That gives them, like I said, a little more flexibility if they need an extra set of turnout gear this year, they need an extra hose. It just gives them a little more flexibility on what to, on what to buy there. The nice part about this is the capital projects are good for at least three years. So, if they don't spend it this year, that might just rolls into next year and the year after that. So, what they don't spend, it rolls over, whereas opposed to the operating budget, it just cuts, it just drops. We also cut out radios. The town, we're kind of in the middle of a radio discussion across town hall. We've had a few discussions and meetings, so we really didn't think this was the year for it until we, until the town comes up with a plan across the entire town. Does anyone have any questions for Fire? All right, we can move to Public Works. Road paving, initially, Mr. Bergaw asked for 850,000. When, when the CIP Committee reviewed the budget, we noticed there was approximately $63,000 in the Board of Ed to repave the road, or driveway essentially, between the middle school and the East Lime Community Center. That's, I guess, not actually a road, that's like an extended driveway. So, the, the proposal is to eliminate the Board of Ed from having to do that project and put the responsibility of that on the, on the Public Works. So, essentially, the Public Works road paving absorbed about a $13,000 cut to the $850,000 to absorb the $63,000 project.
How did that cut happen? Is that just because Public Works has the equipment to do that?
The $13,000 cut?
Yeah.
It was, you know, looking at the totality of the budget, you know, about $27 million in capital projects.
Always decided by the committee?
The committee, yeah.
I thought it was a cost savings because they switched from Public?
It's not cost savings as much as efficiency and synergy essentially to, you know, put the subject matter expert on the roads in charge of that project.
Yeah.
And the $13,000 was just really a CIP-level?
Decision.
Yeah, recommendation, yep. Townwide sidewalk repairs, you know, we just got, by the way, we just convened the last CIP meeting 55 minutes ago, where this came out. So, it's fresh in our minds. The sidewalk repairs, Mr. Bergaw wanted to just let the boards know, the town maintains 18 miles of sidewalk. We are responsible for shoveling and plowing all 18 miles of that sidewalk. So, when you look at this $50,000, the $50,000 is really triaging the most, you know, parts that need most improvement.
The most hazardous.
Right? Yeah, hazardous pieces, things that aren't ADA compliant. We have approximately 300 to 400 aprons, you know, like the little, the gradual slide, you know, for ADA compliance. Every year, we're doing approximately 10 of those to bring it up to ADA compliance. So, it was just mentioned that, you know, maybe next year, you'll see a larger number there, maybe an added zero to try to do a number of those projects at once to try to catch us up. Because if we're doing, if we have 300 and we're doing 10 a year, it's going to take us 30 years to get them all done. So, it's just something to keep in mind for the, for the boards. Town, townwide parking lot ceiling and repairs, town hall, the fire stations, police stations, and those are both LoSiP-funded. All right, Vehicles and Equipment. There was three vehicles that were asked for this year. There was a dump truck, a rack truck, which is a smaller, you know, F-550-sized truck that has interchangeable beds on the back of it, and then there was a mini excavator. The cut that was made, recommended, was the mini excavator. It's currently at 2015. It just got a new motor within the last year, so the CIP Committee thought that that vehicle could last a few more years. Okay, and then plow purchases, as, I think it was this board that voted to approve those new plush plows, I think they're called, that they have more teeth to them, so the road gets a better clean. That's how I understood it.
Kevin, under Highway Vehicle Acquisition, it says breakdown attached. Is that somewhere? Is it context?
The breakdown here, so it's the, for, the dump truck was $200,000. The mini excavator was 160,000, and the rack truck was 130,000. I can get you a copy of this afterwards.
It's not really super important, I just saw it was here and I wasn't, I didn't have it.
Okay, and then, are we good with the vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Buildings and Infrastructure. The committee wanted the public to know that, it's not that the committee did not want the renovation expansion of the community center, the project just was bigger than what should be in a cap, a current-year capital project. That should be a standalone referendum item. So, the committee did not want people to think that they didn't approve of that project. It's just that that should be a standalone item. All right, so that was just like a little housekeeping item from the CIP Committee. Various roof replacements across town hall. We've made a concerted effort across town to replace roofs, so we've reduced that number just in case there's a, an emergency, but Naianic Headquarters has a new roof on it. The East Lime Community Center now has a new roof on it. Up in the next year or so, we're looking at Station Two. So, most of the buildings now have a new roof on them, so we can, we can keep that down to just about 5,000. HVAC replacement across town hall. We lost an HVAC unit at the Senior Center earlier this summer, that was $40,000. So, the 25,000 is really just to replenish the reserve account in case we do lose another HVAC system. And the municipal building repairs and improvements, that's a catch-all. If there's something catastrophic that happens in one of our buildings, for example, last year at the community center, the cooling tower behind the building that provides heat and air conditioning to that building died, and that was a $35,000 repair. That didn't come out of town funds, that came from this LoSiP account. And then the last one that was added back just today is the storage building at the transfer station. That's to keep most of our equipment indoors, but also to kind of shuffle our equipment, right? So, the plan that the CIP Committee has kind of embraced. So, if everyone's familiar with most of the town properties, where Karen Share is right now, that, there's a garage in the back part that's Water and Sewer, but the actual building that Karen Share is in has about four or five bays to it. Two of those bays are occupied right now by Water and Sewer, and two of those bays are occupied by Public Works, and then there's one bay that has an emergency management vehicle tank thing in it. And, but the, the two that have the Public Works vehicles in it, one of them's a loader, so we're trying to move those pieces of equipment up to the transfer station where they, they should be, where they're used. It's just that they don't have any space up at the transfer station. So, once we can build this garage, or, you know, storage building, the Public Works facilities will all be, you know, all their equipment will be up at the transfer station or at the Field Service Building. We will take the Senior Center buses, and this is all proposed. Senior Center buses would go into that building with Karen Share, so they'd be inside, you know, so they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have their catalytic converters cut off it. And then, in the next year, the Phase Two of that essentially is, excuse me, building, Pretz Park in the 10-year capital, we'll talk about in a minute or two. There's, at Pretz Park, there's an expansion, renovation of the facilities, you know, the bathroom that's there, where that garage is, and possibly expand the bathrooms and build some sort of garage to centralize all of Park Rec's equipment. Park Rec have, has equipment all over town, because they don't really have a, you know, a quote-unquote "home" for their equipment. So, if they were able to build, you know, a couple bay, you know, storage shed slash garage kind of situation up there at the Pretz Park, all their equipment where they do most of their, you know, most of their lawn mowing, most of their facility, you know, their work, all the equipment would be there, it'd be their central location. They would then vacate the salt shed, or that wooden, what do you call it? Like, it looks like Railroad Ties built it essentially, like, right below the Karen Chair. There's that, like, little shed building. That's what Park Rec uses for the majority of their equipment storage. It's overheated, it's just, you could see right through it, but it's a very strong? It's not heated, it's just, you could see right through it, um, but it's a very strong building, it's made of railroad ties. Um, but they would vacate that, and the proposal would be to relocate the bus depot to that location. All right, so our buses would no longer be in a, uh, wetland, wetlands next to or to of our wells. Um, so it, it would just be a good, I think it would be a good allocation of resources and, uh-
Would we knock down that salt, salt shed then?
I, I think that's the proposal, I mean, it doesn't have heat, it's just, you know, like a, I don't know if that has electricity.
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, I think it's just a good old fashioned-
I don't know. But that would, you know, why that is so important is right now, we, you know, we worry about I-95 going near our aquifer, right? But we have all these buses that are sitting ducks that have diesel fuel in them.
Yeah.
And if those tanks, one got ruptured or more, we, we'd be dumping it right on top of our aquifer. So, um, uh, the idea is to move them off of that site, get them, uh, also closer to where they have to refuel.
The, their fueling depot is where Karen Share is. So it would be a good, you know, the bus would have to just make a left, get the fuel, and then go about their day.
Right.
Um, so, uh, that's kind of, I guess, the multi-year plan for those facility improvements.
I would just like to pause for a second and say that this, this is so much better than last year. I don't know if the difference was that we did it at the end or that we were all a new board, but just, this is all making sense.
This is the best it's ever been.
It's clearly conked through several times by some very smart people.
Yeah.
It's awesome, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, uh, this, we learned a lot, I mean, we were just-
Yeah, it was huge, yeah.
We went outdoors, got to see all this stuff.
Yeah, it was, it was very good.
And I would say the one thing, bringing everyone into a room together, just a little diatribe, um, the Board of Ed has been a great resource for us. Um, when youth and family services presented to the board, to, you know, in this committee, uh, Marionus Stevens, Jeff Newton, Chris Lund, and Jill Carini from the Board of Ed were all, they, they're all on this committee. Um, when they saw that, uh, Mrs. Furman was asking for a ProWise Smart Board, um, the superintendent said, "I think we have an extra one of those."
Yeah.
All right, and so, they, I think they may have already delivered it.
I think they have.
Okay?
Yeah.
Um, and then, just today, I got a phone call from the Board of Ed Business Manager, Marionus Stevens, um, they have an extra network switch they're not using. Those are thousands of dollars, we have it in this budget for network switches.
Yeah.
Um, so there was, it did create a lot, you know, good dialogue, um, amongst the various departments.
Well, nice job, board.
No, you know, strategic planning, and we heard that, I heard that word first, from the guy sitting right there.
Someone had said that before.
Yeah, I mean, we've implemented strategic planning in many areas, uh, this year, very proud of that.
It's coming together.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, is everyone good with Public Works?
Yeah, I was just trying to recall, where are we at?
We were, that was the last item in Public Works.
Okay.
The two hundred ninety-nine thousand there for low SIP, the low SIP, uh, transfer, uh, the storage building and transfer station. All right, so if everyone's good there, we can move on to youth and family services.
Uh, no, I have a couple of things. Uh, on this, on the capital improvement list, are any of these items that are on here, um, coupled with a, any grant money, federal grant money?
Uh, federal, no, um, but, um, I know, um, we have, you know, there's grant requests we've put in for, you know, radio towers, things like that, that we haven't heard back from yet.
And those would come from the state level?
Those, um, federal, right?
It's, it's, uh, um, Senator Murphy's congressionally-directed spending funding, uh, this is our fourth attempt at this funding, and it finally got past all the hoops that it needed to get through, and, um, providing the president allows it to go into the national budget, then we should get funding for it, but we're kind of on a holding pattern right now.
Okay.
And there is, there is four hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from low SIP funds in this budget.
Um, the McCook Point Sewell, uh, Sewall?
Yep.
Um, I believe that there was a grant that was put in, uh, by Commission of Natural Resources.
Okay.
To, uh, and I don't know if they've heard back from that, but there's supposed to be some grant money available.
Okay.
So if we approve the, uh, so that was, that account was, was cut pretty drastically.
So the, the cut for the Sewall from four forty down to forty thousand, uh, the Sewall's gonna take approximately eighteen months to get permitting. So even if this budget's fully approved and we even put in the four hundred forty thousand, we wouldn't be able to get the work done until the next fiscal year anyway. Um, so that was the recommend, you know, the recommendation from the engineering department.
So with, not to jump ahead, but what's the forty ran for?
Uh, permitting, engineering and permitting for the new wall.
All right.
Yes, that's really a key, uh, I think, a key environmental issue for the town.
Yep.
Um, so, I think in light of what's happening at the federal level, I think it's important for us to keep in mind what funds we are hopeful to get from federal trickle-down to the state level. And, um, if we get the funding, we get it, and if we don't get it, then we don't do it.
Yeah, so this budget doesn't take into account any, any federal funding. Um, if, you know, if, if we get a couple hundred thousand for the radio tower or something like that, we would reappropriate those funds, like we're doing, uh, Wednesday night, um, so the Eastline Community Center was originally a one-point-four-million-dollar project. We ended up spending just shy of five hundred thousand, we're repurposing the, uh, proposing to repurpose the nine hundred thousand to finish the Aquatic Center roof that came in over budget, right? So, um, that would be the exact same thing, so if we ended up getting a grant, um, to, you know, for the cell tower or, or the radio tower or any of the infrastructure related to it, um, whatever money we got a grant for, we could reallocate that money um, either to other projects, projects that are kind of on a waiting list, um, or just set it aside for next year to offset new bonds and cash capital.
I think what you're both saying is we need to be flexible, depending on what comes down the pike.
So I think we've built in that flexibility. Um, okay, so, uh, are you, did you have any more questions?
No.
Okay, um, so youth and family services, the only project, uh, there was two, there was that ProWise board as mentioned, and then the storage shed at the community center to store all the, you know, um, you know, supplies and gear or, you know, everything else they do over there, um, so the storage shed stayed in the budget. And we have any questions for, uh, the youth center, there was only one project there. Okay, going to Park and Rec, um, when we go down to buildings and equipment, um, why is that mislabeled? Okay, well, you know, you live and you learn, um, so let's just say Parks and Rec Vehicle and Equipment, uh, but it's still Parks and Rec. Um, okay, so sand spreader, that was taken out, there was leftover funds in the purchase of a truck in this current year. The sander was going on that truck, it was a, a good use of the funds there. And there was a little money that was, uh, due, and, uh, Jerry Locken, uh, the Park and Rec Director, uh, absorbed it through his special revenue fund. So the general fund and the spending freeze did not pick that up. Um, we will be replacing one of his, uh, the twenty-ten pickup truck there for ninety-two thousand dollars, inclusive of a plow and a sander on that, uh, the turf chemical applicator, uh, the landscape trailer, and the infill groomer are all due for replacements. Park and Rec Maintenance, uh, so the field renovations at Pretz Park, one of the fields, uh, it might have some, uh, I don't wanna say lumpiness to it or unevenness, so the idea is to laser grade these fields, bring it, you know, I don't know if they bring in the new grass or put sod down or what they do there, but, uh, renovations of the field, they've done two of the fields already, um, and some of that was with ARPA funds. Uh, and then one that just came down the pike today, Pretz Park Design and Engineering for Renovations. So that is, when we talk about Pretz Park, the plan previously mentioned with the, uh, bathroom, the restrooms there, that building, and then building some sort of garage, um, you know, we, we are applying to the state for some grant funds for that. However, um, they'd like to see, you know, in order to get grant funds, they'd like to see, okay, what, would you have a concept design? Do you have engine, engineering done, architect? So, uh, if, the, the committee voted to add, um, seventy-five thousand dollars there for design and engineering services to start bringing that, that plan to fruition.
The plan is to bond that for ten years, just to get those plans?
Uh, yeah, seventy-five, um, uh, we were, the, the current, I think it's been there for forty-five years there now. Um, so usually you encompass the engineering costs just into that capital project and amortize it. You know, so I think, I, I think ten years, it probably could go twenty, um, 'cause those, those buildings are, we're getting good useful life out of our buildings here in town. Um, so, uh, and then where are we? So we talked about the Sewall, forty thousand for engineering permitting, park, park improvement plan. Um, so park improvement plan, Jerry has a list, and when I say Jerry, the Park and Rec Director, Mr. Locken, um, has a list of projects throughout these parks, uh, so he's used this money, this is the second year, um, hopefully that the, the town will fund this. But when you go to these parks, you'll notice, I think in McCook's and Hole-in-the-Wall, there's new showers, uh, like outside shower stalls, clean your feet, things like that, there's, um, he's putting new grills, picnic tables, benches, um, he's used the money for bleachers, he's used it for, so he's got a whole set of, um, he's already had this, you know, earmark for the next few years to just bring these parks, uh, update the equipment, um, and just make them, um, nice, I guess.
Nice, you gotta keep them up to date, right?
So, um, there, you know, most, you know, most of these, most of his facilities, you know, the, the boardwalk and the parks are what's bringing all the, the tourism and everyone here, so that's probably good to maintain it. Uh, and the one, uh, the second, other cut to, uh, the parks maintenance budget here is the Park Master Plan, and that was really a, you know, a concept of, uh, does the town have enough parks, and does it need more parks? And so, um, in, in the tough budget year, when you look at twenty-seven million dollars, it, it just didn't really, um, maybe next year. Does that have any questions for Park and Rec? All right, at the school level, there was nothing for, for the high school for the current year. Uh, middle school, there was one project for roof life, extension and restoration on one of the, the wings of that school. Naianic Center, that, that's due for a, a complete roof replacement. And then the two other projects, artificial turf replacement and technology and other capital items. In the past, the Board of Ed used to, um, get a lease and pay interest on that money. Um, and our proposal is to, uh, to, to lease it this year, and in the future years, uh, pay that with cash capital.
So I see that the middle school roof appears on a ten-year bonding, that's to assume that it has a useful life beyond ten years, correct? This, this past job.
Yeah, so I think the idea there is, um, you know, when you look at Naianic Center School, that's an entire roof, that's the twenty-year bond.
Twenty years.
Um, so, you know, we could move that out, it's just kind of where, um, where preliminary placed it.
We have reimbursement for roofs, too.
Correct, forty, forty point seven percent, I believe, at the moment.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if we do the, um, reimbursement for those partial roof jobs, um, right? So I don't know if the, you know, the, the middle school for three-twenty-five would get that, or they would apply for, I'm not sure. I know the bigger ones, like the Aquatic Center one we're doing now, that's going in for reimbursement. The Naianic Center School, a million dollars going in for reimbursement. I'm not sure about the, uh, uh, the turf, I don't know if that's, is that reimbursable too, do you know? I'm not sure about that one, 'cause it's, I don't, I don't-
I don't think so.
No, I don't think the turf is not, not the turf, no.
Um, so-
Where, where is turf appealing?
Uh, the, the last project.
Artificial turf replacement with track.
That was only one point two, Kev? Yeah, and I, uh, so Waterford just replaced theirs, and theirs came in just shy of one point two as well, so.
What does, um, the track recapitalization, I, what does that mean?
Um, I, I think recapitalization and renovation probably go, I think it's the same word, I think, um, from what I understand of this project, um, is, so they're doing the turf field, but at the same time, the actual track is starting to show signs of deterioration. So I guess they're just gonna, you know, maybe mill it down and then apply a new top coat essentially to it.
Yeah, there are a lot of cracks.
A lot of cracks, some divots, and, you know, water's getting in there and breaking it apart when it freezes. And once that happens, it doesn't last but a couple of years, 'cause once the water gets in there and it just spreads and breaks the cracks up, you're done. Um, so overall, across the entire town, we're looking at seven point six million dollars of capital projects, six point three million of that is bonded. Cash capital is approximately one point three million dollars. Does anyone have any questions?
Could you repeat that again?
Yeah, uh, if you go, flip to the last page, um, so, uh, across the entire town, we're going to be bonding six point three million. Overall capital projects is seven point six five million.
I am, um, I'm very impressed with this, because there are a lot of projects on here that we have put off for years. Especially moving the school buses, we've tried for that, that's certainly an environmental issue, we've tried for that for several years. Um, there are a number of things on here that just, we just haven't had either the steam to, uh, to do it with or we've had to make cuts, and I think that this is, um, very well laid out, and congratulations to the committee.
Thanks.
Commendations.
Well, I gotta say, the, uh, the shell game of moving the buses and everything was really, um, Joe Bregaw and, uh, and Jerry and Kevin, they got together and they came up, uh, with this idea and presented it to me early this morning, and it just, it made so much sense that, uh-
This morning?
Yeah, so on my, on my write-in-
It was over the weekend, he, this guy's working all weekend.
On my write-in, it was, uh, Justin Porter, Jerry Locken, Christopher, uh, Christian Lund at this Board of Ed, myself and Joe Bregaw, we were on a teams call, and we were looking at the GIS of the town properties on where we could put these things, what has restrictions, what has deed restrictions, um, and, you know, looking at this, that's where, okay, well, why don't we, well, when we're repaving the road, why don't we just repave the, the buses? You can't, inland wetlands won't let that happen, okay, well, they're kind of sit, if you pull it up, they're sitting in a wetland. Um, you know, should they really be there? No, they shouldn't, where else are you gonna put it? We don't know. And so, we kind of all collaborated and said, okay, well, if we move this here, this here, so it was really-
This was your write-in?
This is what?
You were, you were driving a car doing this?
Well, I was just watching on the camera, but, you know, the cops are here, what are you?
Where all the best ideas happen, isn't this a good, good idea?
Yeah, um, so it was a good collabor- collaboration across the-
But it really, really was, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, Bluetooth, yeah, exactly. Um, it's after the fact, it was an old line.
Where those, uh, buses were parked, uh, or are parked currently, uh, is that, when they leave, is that area going to be revegetated? Because originally that was, uh, grass, grassland, and with, uh, you know, not just mowable grass, but grass-type, natural farm grass, I guess you'd say.
I know the perfect person to sic that project on, um, the pollinator and pathways, we'll stick them, big old, a couple acres right there, that'd be perfect. But I imagine, uh, yeah, that's, that's, you know, we haven't, we just kind of put this plan together in the last, you know, day or so, so, um, but that would probably be what, what happened there, I imagine. Um, now, if everyone's good with the current year, I can just touch upon this and just mention the big-ticket items.
On the ten-year.
On the ten-year?
Yeah.
So when we look at the ten-year, um, so really, there's two things to look at. There's the ten-year overall, and then there's also five-year, does everyone have the ten-year?
I do not.
Yes.
Here, I'll give my copy.
Thank you.
James, what a guy. Um, okay, so, um, there's really two votes, so to speak, on this, it's the State of Connecticut required five-year CIP project, and just as a town, we've kind of, we were projecting out ten years just to see what it looks like overall. So when we look at the, uh, ten-year project, uh, a ten-year listing, we are looking at approximately one hundred and nine million dollars of capital projects, roughly, well, I'll switch my slide here. So we are looking at, sorry, down here at the bottom, oh my gosh, we're so, sorry, so small, one hundred and nine million, two fifty-seven of capital projects. Okay? Roughly ten point nine million dollars of projects a year of this. Is everyone, uh, okay, just wanna make sure everyone's good here. So some things to note, um, as mentioned earlier, we have, I'm just gonna touch upon them, for the, uh, community center. Uh, in the budget, we are anticipating renovation and expansion of the community center, uh, design work, approximately a hundred thousand dollars. This is a placeholder, it will probably be more, likely more than that. What we're doing is just saying, okay, look, the town is, um, committing to this project, right? Even though it's not a referendum, but in our tenure, in our CIP, we are committing to, to looking at this project. The, uh, the idea is, you know, before you just bond the full seventeen million dollars, let's get an idea of what we're actually bonding. So the, the money beforehand is the same principle we're doing with, um, Park and Rec with the Pretz Park renovations. This current year, we're gonna put money for engineering and design work, and then next year, once the project is more solidified and rounded out, then we will put forward the, the amount, you know, once it's kind of hardened up by architects and engineers.
Kevin, we're, we're looking at the tenure, where is that that you just talked about?
One, two, three. Go, uh, four pages in, four pages in, it should say Public Works across the, uh, to the left.
Okay.
And then go down to Buildings and Infrastructure?
Oh, okay, got it.
All right.
See, thank you, yeah.
Yep, no problem.
Um, while, while I am a fan of the community center, obviously, we're spending a- While, while I am a fan of the community center, obviously, we're spending a hundred grand in this proposal to do engineering and just hold a place?
So, you know, so when we look at the CIP, we're, I don't wanna say we're committing, because it's us to go through voting, you know, through the referendum and all the boards, but the committee's saying, okay, you know, if we want this project to start to come to fruition in twenty twenty-eight, we should set money aside in twenty twenty-seven to start the engineering and initial phases of the project to get, to get it up and running, right? Because if, if, if we just put the seventeen million in twenty twenty-seven, we're gonna bond that money and pay interest on it, right? And we don't really need it, because engineering, architecture is gonna take upwards of a year, right? So, it's just kind of helping offset some of the interests that we'll have to pay on that bond. That's really what it's coming down to. Does that make sense?
It does. It's just, it's one of these things. I mean, we have people come in here and say that they're, they're cutting a position or something for, you know, ninety grand, and we've got one here for a hundred grand that's just kind of, it felt like a gesture, but I think I understand it a little bit better. It's not necessarily a gesture. It's kind of the first step in a process of.
Correct, yeah, yep. And this would be proposed, it would probably be bonded money, so.
So, different, different pot.
Good analogy there, Jason. It is part of the process to get to where we want to be in this building, to have drawings in place, engineering stuff done. So, you gotta start there before you actually get the real ad machine up.
That, that's seventeen million dollars. Just looking at what we have right now for bond anticipation notes, about nineteen million. We have nineteen million dollars of bond anticipation notes, and we're paying almost nine hundred thousand. So, at seventeen million, you're talking about eight hundred thousand in, in interest to pay that. So, if we could delay that a year, that saves us, you know, north of half a million dollars.
Baby steps.
Yep. So, other, on the same page, if we want to just look up to roads, paving, and bridges, you'll notice in twenty twenty-eight, the same kind of thing with sidewalk construction. You know, Public Works is saying, Society Road to East Patagonia is a two million dollar project, so they're doing the same kind of thing there of doing, getting engineering work done, and then the actual construction piece of that. Okay, do we have anything else on this list here? I think that one's good. Other ones I want to touch upon, if we go to the fire service on page three, really just back one page, you'll notice down here, we kind of reconfigured some of this. So, under this fire service facilities line, excuse me, the CIP committee is recommending a facility study in the year twenty twenty-eight with the anticipation of renovating or rebuilding the three firehouses in the twenty thirty timeframe, right? So, same kind of thing. I think that facility study, you know, thinking about it now, there's probably the facility study in twenty twenty-eight, an engineering or concept design in twenty twenty-nine, and then the construction, right? So, as we get closer to that, it gets more refined, but just as, you know, placeholders for this. And the other idea was, if you've seen previous versions of this, next year, we were due for the headquarters renovation of six million dollars. Two years later, Flanders, and then a couple of years later, the headcourt, Station Two. It kind of makes sense. If you're gonna do these buildings, let's get a study done of all three of them. Where are the biggest needs, number one. Number two, if you're gonna take out a bond for six million, okay, seven million, how much, what's the impact of that? Just get all the projects, RFP them at the same time, get a little economies of scale of getting the three projects. Get a contractor in here, you know, if he does, he or she does one firehouse at a time, you know, and they're here for three fire stations, what kind of deal can you give us to do three projects in one, right? I think we did that years ago with the elementary schools. Did we kind of do those together? From what I've seen in the bonding?
It's economies of scale.
Now, will it be looking at whether or not we should consolidate them, or it would be?
I think that's the study.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, and we're also, and, you know, just, I always, it almost, I don't wanna say comical, but here we are in twenty twenty-five, just starting twenty twenty-five, and we're planning for something for twenty thirty. Who knows what interest, you know, inflation's gonna be, you know? So, there's a lot of factors, obviously, to take into account, but this is our best, you know, our best guess at it.
So, this is just, this is just kind of like a very ethereal look at what it could be.
It's our best faith effort, but also the State of Connecticut requires us to file a five-year CIP program. So, there is a state mandate to do this. We just expanded it out a few more years. But really, it gives you a good picture of, you know, what's coming down the pike.
And was this also part of that thirty hours that you guys put in on the CIP?
Oh, yeah, yeah. This was, this was what we just met on about an hour and a half ago. So, if anyone has any, so if we just want to talk about, let's see, the only other thing here, if you want to go to Board of Ed real quick, because that's, you know, a big-ticket item. As mentioned, the high school doesn't have any current year capital projects.
Can you give us a page on that?
Uh, second from the end, if you want to go right to the very end. Next year, I will number these pages, Jason.
Just trying to keep up with the fastest move in mind in these lines.
Education, so if we look at the high school, you'll notice we have approximately seventeen point six million dollars for the high school of capital projects anticipated over the next ten years. However, down here at the bottom, the ELHS major recapitalization, we have TBDs in place. So, expect this number to change once that Vision Committee, I believe it is, starts whittling, you know, getting, getting to a more refined number. So, that, that'll go from a placeholder to an actual number, all right, just so everyone's aware. And I think that's really it for Board of Ed, bigger Board of Ed projects. I know there's the Central Office. I think that building's from eighteen fifty-seven. I, I think that's the year, I think on the side of the building. So, they're looking at some renovations to that building in the year twenty twenty-nine as well. Does anyone have any questions with the ten-year CIP?
Where was that Central Office? I was just looking.
Uh, the second pa, uh, last page, very last page.
Oh, I see.
That is also a TBD.
Understood. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Is this kind of all TBD when you, when you think about it, right?
Yeah, you know, yeah, but.
A little stronger than that.
Yeah, no, it's more.
The one thing is if, if you have a dollar amount in here, grant, you know, people that administer grants at the federal and state level, they, you know, the first question is, okay, show me your capital improvement plan, all right? And if it's not in here, okay, well, so you're not taking it seriously. Why are we gonna take your request seriously? So, a lot of times, a lot of these, you know, when we put them in here, even if it's just a rough number, it's something's better than nothing, you know? So, with that, if no one has any questions, that's the CIP committee work. And then the only thing is, at the last, you know, deliberations, I guess we're in deliberations, but, so we vote on an operating budget, but I also need the Board of Selectmen to vote on the current year operating as well as the CIP at some point.
So, we won't do that tonight. We'll do that.
Yeah, well, yeah, when you guys can review it and ask me any questions or whoever. I will say, if anyone has any questions, you know, to a department, I think most of you have my cell phone. If not, I can give it to you. And I can request any department heads to come in or get you an answer to something if anyone has a question.
So, the CIP that we vote on is just the current and then the five-year? Is that correct? Not the ten-year?
Yeah, we can vote on the ten-year, just so we can say it was authorized. There's no harm in that.
Okay.
We usually vote on the ten-year.
Yeah, I think in the past, we voted on the ten-year, and then, but really, the State of Connecticut's looking for that five-year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, it was a good piece of work. So much better than what was done in the past way, the last minute. Yep, so, really good process. So, I think we could start now for the render of the evening here at the beginning of the budget book. And I would say we'll just, we can go through each section. We'll start at one oh one.
I just had a question on the PT clerical, with a four hundred and fifty-six point four percent.
Did we absorb?
So, in the past, so the, for the last about year and a half, the town has had a floater in town to assist if a department's had a need. So, and that position was paid for out of the part-time clerical line in the HR budget, when we didn't have a part-time clerical assistant in the HR office. Now that we have a part-time assistant in the HR office, you know, the HR department doesn't need two, you know, assistants, but that there's a need throughout town to have this floater position. If anyone's, you know, if the tax collectors are at a conference, if, you know, so this person does float between the offices. One thing, I haven't got the chance to talk to Jerry Locken about this, but if you look at Park and Rec's budget, they have a part-time clerical person added to their budget, because they've, they've kind of switched some full-time salaries around with the retirement of one of the full-time administrators in the Park and Rec office. So, they had, before, they had two administrative assistants in the Park and Rec office full-time. One retired just recently. That position, that benefits and the full-time status of that position moved over to the grounds crew, right? So, as everyone knows, there's a big need here in town to maintain the properties we have. And every year, we're kind of going back to the boards for either additional appropriation for seasonal help or overtime for Park and Rec, just with all the facilities they have to manage. So, in conversations with Jerry, you know, he was in my office one day, and I said, okay, well, if this individual's retiring, why don't we take the full-time status and move that to your grounds and to bolster your grounds? But with that, he still needs a part-time assistant to help out during the springtime, when they bring on, you know, a couple hundred seasonal employees and also take on the beach passes and everything else that happens over there. So, one thing we could discuss is reducing the line, the part-time clerical line in the First Selectman's Office with the intention of the floater kind of floats out of Park and Rec, right? Because Park and Rec, it's really a seasonal.
So, you're saying put the PT clerical, this one in?
PT is already in Park and Rec. If we pulled up Park and Rec's budget real quick, you'll notice the seasonal line is a little high.
Yeah, I think I noticed.
So, and there was, there was a cut that the First Selectman did make on that line, so.
What number were they?
If we go to, hold on, let me just pull it up here. It's gotta be towards the back. It's like four twenty?
Four twenty-one, I think.
Oh, it's pretty close. Yep. Let me pull it up on my spreadsheet here for everybody at home.
You said seasonal goes up?
Part-time seasonal labor.
So, the deal with the seasonal labor, what's the, is the final number one eighty-seven?
Yes, ninety, nine thirty-two.
Okay. That's for the secretary. Let me just, hold on here.
So, that's union payroll.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I tie this all on, everybody. Okay, so, the part-time seasonal help got cut back to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The initial, so a hundred and twenty-five thousand, the cut would be, five thousand dollars would be cut from the office, and then twenty-one seven would be cut from the seasonal parks crew. So, if they had thirty-five thousand originally set aside for the part-time admin, they now have thirty set aside. That might be a good, you know, because they need someone really during the springtime and early summer. And then, you know, tax collectors need somebody in January and July.
We pull it out of my budget?
Maybe a piece of it, right? You know, I think there still should be something there, just so we have a, you know, if we ever need additional help or special project or something, but that just could be a.
So, are you saying that we need to add to this PT clerical?
Nope, nope.
Or it just stays like that?
I mean, you know, it's, I mean, we put that there, because, you know, we have a floating position that doesn't really have a quote-unquote "home" in the budget. So, that's where we put it, but now, you know, this just, I was just thinking of this, you know, about an hour ago, where we can, if we have to make some cuts, where can we make them? And how can we fit this individual that's still employed here within the budget? I think that could be a reasonable accommodation, just, you know, maybe reduce the First Selectman's budget with the anticipation that this part-time administrative secretary is filled with our floating position. You know, right? Does that make sense?
No.
No, I'm confused. I'm not sure what you want us, what, like.
So, we're looking at five one six two oh, part-time clerical?
Correct. So, so just so, so what I was talking about was, in Dan's bu, in the First Selectman's budget, right? The First Selectman's office, department there, you're seeing a four hundred and fifty-six percent increase. That's because we put that floating position in Dan's budget, right? In the, in the First Selectman's office, First Selectman's department. What I'm saying is if we are, if, if we're looking for places to kind of trim this budget, that could be an option, because we have this, the spot in Park and Rec for thirty grand, right? That we could, we can kind of reassign this person to that department. Does that make sense to everybody now?
So, we wouldn't be adding to the Park and Rec budget?
We would not be. There's already thirty thousand in there.
There's thirty thousand in there.
Yep.
So, we could reduce, what would be a reasonable amount to reduce it? Still?
Oh, man, I wish I had two screens. Were you at twenty-seven, eight twenty? We have thirty thousand set aside in Park and Rec, you know, cut it, I mean.
I'm all for the reduction, so.
Yeah. I, I think you could reduce this, you know, this person could just be reassigned from Town Hall over there. So, I think you could cut this, I think you could cut it back to five, six grand. And we still have, you know, six thousand dollars, you still have a part-time clerical for about two months.
So, cut it down from twenty-seven, eight twenty to five thousand?
Five or six thousand, I think, you know.
Because that's what, the, in twenty twenty-five, it was five thousand.
Correct. Yeah, and I think, you know.
We put it back down there.
Yeah, and because, so it's more than, just so, just so everyone knows, we do pay Mr. Lynch from that south, from this line. So, it's more than just, we don't have a spot for AV techs and some other, you know, like the new, some of the commissions, right? So, the Fair Rent Commission Secretary is paid out of this line, so some line.
Maybe we just cut it back twenty thousand and leave seventy-eight twenty?
That, that could be reasonable.
Or seventy-five hundred, just to make it even.
You don't need a motion or anything like that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, definitely. Each, each cut.
You want to put it down to, what, seven thousand eight hundred and twenty? Okay.
So, this person would fill in for two or three days, maybe, if somebody was out for extended time, and there's no benefits?
No benefits, besides what's, you know, state law.
Yeah.
No full-time benefits, we should say, right? So.
Okay. So, what are we saying? What are we moving this down to? Seven thousand eight hundred and twenty. Okay. So, can I make a motion?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. I move in the First Selectman's budget under PT clerical five one six two zero to change the number from two, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty and reduce it by twenty thousand down to seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
So, how many hours would this equate to for someone to help?
Thirty thousand in Park and Rec for this position, and now we have seventy-eight hundred, but the full seventy-eight hundred is not for this position. I would say twenty-eight hundred of it should be earmarked for AV tech and other expenses, at least. So, I would, I would actually, you know, cut it in half, so say seventy-eight hundred, thirty-five, thirty-seven. So, at least thirty-two thousand would be set aside for this part-time clerical assistant at even.
Okay, that seems more reasonable to me.
That's eleven hundred hours divided by fifty-two.
They're adding also in the.
Twenty-one hours a week. That's about accurate.
So, that's, okay.
Yep, that's about, that's about a twenty-hour-a-week position, which is roughly what they, what she works. It comes in a little more. It's like twenty-one and a half hours, but during the springtime, that person will probably be ramped up to twenty-eight to thirty-two hours. And then, you know, during the summer, and when they're not really needed, they kind of ebbs and flows. So, I think the twenty hours a week is probably a good placeholder there.
Any, any additional discussion?
I'm curious about the grant writing. It looks like there's a story there. I know this board had talked at length about grant writing.
Well, we have a motion.
We have a motion.
Yeah, let's do this first.
That's okay. So, um, any other discussion on the pending motion? On the, um, moving it to seven thousand eight hundred and twenty? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being done, sub motion carries. Okay, so we can still engage in further discussion. Jason?
Yeah, I was just, I was curious about the grant writing position. I know our board has spoken about it several times. It's something that might be beneficial to the town since that way they can bring in revenue. Looks like it was removed.
Yep.
That idea fell out of favor?
In the current year, we, we implemented a spending freeze. The idea was that twelve thousand, we'd, you know, fire that position up probably mid to, um, late twenty-twenty-five to start bringing, try to bring in some grants at the end of the year. But with the spending freeze, we haven't been able to touch that funding.
Thank you.
I would like to see some money restored in that account. As Jason just mentioned, the possibility of additional monies. That would not necessarily be a full-time position because not everyone, not one, one person doesn't necessarily have all the skills for a specific grant. So obviously, this wouldn't be, isn't a benefited position. But as we've seen with several of the grants that we've applied for, we haven't gotten because we didn't know the language. All these grants are different. There's buzzwords that you throw in. And we have missed out on potential funds, particularly for historic properties. The, um, we nearly lost the grant for the historic cemeteries. Fortunately, they extended the deadline and we were able to do some additional paperwork. But there's a skill to this and there's money out there. And a grant writer would also can do the research to find many of these potential things. So I would like to see some money restored in this account. And that it could possibly be a floating position. In other words, if there was something for the historical society, someone who had those skills could be employed to do that. Or if it, uh, you know, it was some other department, uh, the same thing would apply.
I thought the, um, like, planning and, um, commission under Gary Geishaw, I thought they had a grant writer there for a while. They had a, an intern who was doing the, the grant writing, right?
Yeah, not, not that I know of. I mean, maybe, maybe one intern was at some point.
Yeah.
But I, from what I, from my recollection of downstairs, you know, the land use office, I think the latest intern, I think they were looking for some sort of GIS intern.
Okay.
Uh, to assist with the GI, you know, the, the maps and things like that. I'm not, not too sure about the grant writing piece. I know Gary has helped, um, you know, uh, the Sam Smith, the, the farmstead up there. He's helped us get some ship-out grants and things like that. So he is, he is a valuable resource for that.
Yeah, Anna Perch was involved.
I'm thinking of the other property. So is that Smith Harris then? But Anna Perch does get grants as well. She's gotten grants.
Dan Clary, you just got the wonderful.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know. My, my, I agree. You know, a, a grant writer could probably do some great things. But at the level of twelve thousand dollars, it's, it's the kind of endeavor where you have to be in it every day and fully committed. That, that's your job. You've got to produce. We, we want to see that you produce these grants for us. And someone that's just working out part-time, a few hours a week, I think we're almost better off just trying to assist the people that are finding the grants that are immersed in whatever the endeavor they're working on. Like, you know, I just pointed out Dan Clary, he's, he's in the IT world, but he, he found these grants as part of his, uh, you know, research and what he does and was able to seize upon it. Anna Perch, same way.
I think Julie Wilson, too.
Julie. Yeah, she got that great, yeah. Thank you, Julie. So it really, I, I just don't know if throwing twelve thousand at a grant writer is, we're gonna get the.
We need to bet bigger some other time when there's more funding.
I, I, yeah, I think, I kinda, I think that's right. Bet bigger some other time's a good way to put it. I mean, if we solve some of these other issues and then there's a moment when.
Windfall or something.
I mean, we, we could really hire someone that that's their job. And, you know, they report back to, you know, to me or whoever they're reporting back to, um, on their performance and, and finding these grants and getting them through across the finish line. I don't think you can do that in the part-time world.
I know in, in Brookfield, um, in twenty-eighteen, we had a macroburst. You probably, you probably remember, that also affected Hamden, Sleeping Giant. There was a bunch of those like inverse tornadoes that ripped through town.
Yeah.
And at that point, the town hired a project manager to assist with the FEMA grants reimbursements. And that position evolved into a project grant manager as well as like economic development, essentially. So as they, as they brought in grants, they, they did the project-based side of the grant. That, that position kind of came to fruition. That was a, so maybe something to like that effect.
Well, I like, and Candace, I remember you originally put this idea out there and we're all like, we all kind of glommed onto it. And, uh, maybe it's an idea that just hasn't had its day, but I hope we can get it out there before a microburst or a macroburst comes to, causes some damage. It just seems like a great idea. But maybe not this year.
No, I think there's certainly a role, but I, it's, it's gotta be a time we can really devote, you know, get someone that's working, you know, significant number of hours during the week. You know, maybe a twenty-eight-hour-a-week job to really, that's all you do is. I don't think we're there.
All right. Do we make a motion to?
I don't think there's a motion.
Or do we just keep going to the next one?
Just keep, I mean, we, as we, we had the motion on the, uh, part-time clerical.
Okay. So just one quick question before we leave. Veterans' rep expenses and Memorial Day parade, those are the ones that came over from services for the community, correct?
Correct.
So we added those to my.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
We don't want to take any chances that they might be diminished.
No, I understand.
And just, and just so everyone's aware, the veteran rep, a large portion of that nine thousand dollars is mileage reimbursement to and from West Haven and Newington to bring the veterans in town to their appointments at the VA hospitals. So as the, the reason I bring this up is as we start talking about pool cars, it wouldn't take much to put Mr. Burridge on our insurance and put him in a town car as opposed to his personal car and save that nine thousand dollars. It's just something to think about.
Well, let's, let's think about it. I mean.
Well, we don't have pool cars yet.
No.
So I just, it's, it's kind of a, a, a bigger discuss, I, I mean, it's definitely board-level discussion, um, but it's just whether you, we convert the fleet of, you know, town cars here to pool cars. I don't really know the, you know, the process for that right now. But that's something to explore definitely in the future here, especially when you look at the, the CIP budget here, the assessor, planner, zoning. There's, there's half a dozen cars in that budget, right? So just something to keep in mind.
It's worthy of a discussion, you know, full flushing it out at some point after we get through this. To look at for next year.
Yep.
Yep. Anything else on, uh? Okay, then we go to the assessor, which is one oh two.
Any other questions with the assessor's budget?
I just wanted to noted that the, um, assessment aids went up because they passed exams and got new certifications. That's why that went up six point one-nine percent.
Thank you for that.
That's right.
That's more my question.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've been.
So just so everyone knows, all UPSEU, um, for the majority of these, UPSEU, like the administrative assistants, highway, um, building, that we're in contract negotiations with them right now. So most of them should be zero, but like with the exception of what you just noted here.
Yep.
Um, there's certifications they've been passing, tests. And so with that comes something outside of the, you know, contract negotiations.
So UPSEU is union, correct?
Yes, yep, yep.
Got it.
All right, I'll move on to tax collector.
All right. Tax collector? Let's see.
All right. So my question on this is on tax bill printing. I remember this coming down the pike when I was on, I think, Board of Finance. Does outsourcing the tax bills save money? Does it?
I think it does, right, yeah.
You know, Ann, I don't want to lie to you. I've never analyzed that account. The bills come in, I, I'm sure they, you know, our tax collectors are very diligent and, uh, you know, they're all, they're all, they all live in town. So I doubt, I bet they're getting the best bang for their buck there.
So, I mean, the other issue is too, by the time we actually get the budget to them so they can do the tax bills, they're under a time crunch.
A very quick time crunch.
And I think that was the big issue that, when they presented to us about it. But I just kind of had that question anyway.
Uh, maybe there was something, there was something else, though, that went to, uh, maybe some type of postcard mailing or something.
Oh, oh, Dan, I know what you're gonna say. We have converted to, a lot of our printings that are not done in-house are now not, they're going to CCM. So Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, thank you, Dan, for that one. So the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, which we're a member of, has a print shop. And they do things pennies on the dollar for what other vendors can charge. So, uh, is that what you're talking about, Dan? So a lot, every printing where possible, CCM does our printing for us at a much reduced cost.
Tax bills are different because they're.
Tax bills, I, yeah, yeah, that goes to our vendor.
But other printings?
Yeah, but all other printings across town are really, uh. Yep.
Okay, great.
Any, any other observations or questions on the, uh?
Yeah, I just want to give one quick shout-out to, uh, the software that tax collector and assessor uses, Gemini Software. She just, we just signed a contract with them for three years, zero percent. Zero percent. The only software vendor I've seen in my whole tenure here is zero percent for three years.
Wow.
So I just, I gotta give her kudos where kudos is due.
Wow.
So.
That's great.
That is.
Next is building. That's, uh, one oh four. We gonna add you, are we good with?
Are we good with the, uh, building department? The only cut to that was just to bring back the part-time building officials from the eighty-five to seventy-five. We currently have two part-time building officials. I, I know, uh, one of them keeps saying he's gonna retire, but he's still here. So eventually, there might come a time where, um, we, we, we try to hire a second full-time building official. But there's, there's a lot less building officials than there are towns across Connecticut. So once you have one of these, you don't want to let them go. So it's just something to keep in mind for future, uh, future months down the road here.
I don't have anything for.
Town engineer?
No.
Oh, so town engineer has been zeroed out. Town engineer is now, we are combining departments.
Okay.
Uh, I think we mentioned this during the budget discussions.
Okay.
So town engineer is now part of Public Works.
Okay.
Right? Because we, we don't currently have a town engineer. The deputy public works director. When the last public works deputy retired, um, we promoted our, uh, town engineer. So currently, our deputy public works director is also interim town engineer. So there's that.
All right. So human resources, then?
Yep.
Is next?
It's next, human resources?
I have a question on that. On the HR director, which is line five-one-six-one-eight, there was an increase of eleven point seven-six percent. And I didn't know if someone could explain why it went up so much.
Yeah. Um, so at, uh, around her one-year anniversary, I promoted the HR manager to HR director. And, um, he was raised consistent with the, with the new title and new responsibilities.
Did she also take over the, um, Fair Rent Commission also? Okay, that's, that's.
So there's additional responsibilities and.
And she's doing a bang-up job over there.
Yeah, no, I know she is. I just wanted to make, bring it to everybody's attention.
And also coordinates FOIs.
Yeah. Yeah, so she's involved in, we, we established a new FOIA procedure and, uh, working with, uh, Sandy and Stacy and our town council to try to get ahead and stay on top of, uh, the numerous FOIA requests that we're receiving.
Okay.
She's done an excellent job at that, so, um, yeah, we're, we're in much better shape than we've been in the past with our human resources. Very pleased at how things are going there.
Okay.
And, I don't know. Any other questions, um? If we have the assistant. In there. That was reduced. Town clerk?
Longevity? Is that what you're gonna ask about?
Pardon me?
I just thought, I thought I saw Jason's eyes.
I, well.
Yeah, that's just longevity. That's just what it is.
So, uh, so, well, the reason why you see that spike there for longevity, remember, uh, town clerk and tax collector are going from elected to appointed. When they become appointed, uh, they know, they, they now receive the full benefits of the non-affiliated agreement. And one of those is a longevity payment, right? So when you're elected, you only get a longevity payment if you're elected twice. But these individuals have been here, you know, north of a decade, I think, in both instances. And so as such, they, they go from elected to appointed and now get that, uh, non-affiliated longevity payment.
Other than that, pretty, uh, it's flat otherwise?
Yep.
So, all right. Any other questions on that? All right, we'll go to Ledge Light Health District.
So I just wanted to share with everybody, um, the cost increase for Ledge Light. It comes down to the per capita charge. So it went from seven dollars and fifty-nine cents to seven dollars and eighty-two cents. So that's the three percent charge you see there. And I believe the other piece of it is an increase in our population to eighty. Uh, by eighty, to eighty, Jesus.
Exactly.
Only eighty people are all in this building. So that was, that's why there's a three and a half percent increase. They, they increased, um, their, their budget was increasing by three percent. And then the other piece of it is it's per capita. So as our population grew by eighty, uh, so did that, that number.
Do we know, do, does it reside here that our current population?
Hmm, yeah, it does. It's, um.
Eighteen, eighteen-nine-twenty-nine?
It was.
Eighteen-nine-twenty-nine.
Eighteen, yeah, nine-twenty-nine, up from eighteen-eight-fourty-nine.
Still under twenty.
Eighteen-nine-twenty-nine?
Yeah, eighteen-nine-twenty-nine. So it's a difference of eighty.
All right. Any, any questions on, on Ledge Light? Put a little packet there and with it, you want to lose it later? I think I know somebody. Let's see. Information technology?
Technology?
What's that?
No, I was just reciting the next, uh.
All right. So IT, all right, here's one to look at.
Okay, so can I kind of walk through this?
Yeah.
For everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so at the top here, what we're looking at is, so when we went to Munis, right, our new accounting software, we're following the State of Connecticut's Uniform Chart of Accounts. As such, we no longer list individual, uh, individuals, like individual positions as a budget item anymore. So you'll notice before, we had an IT database supervisor, an IT engineer, an IT director. They are now rolled up into a non-union wages position. So if we add up them before, it was approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. We're up to three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. If you look here, this IT engineer, this was a half-year position. So that's when you, when you get into those, you know, point-five full-time equivalents. We, we funded this position knowing, um, the person would start in November of this year. And so in the future, we'd have to make up the other, another month in the budget. There was, the, the cut here for forty-five thousand dollars was a proposal to add a, um, help desk assistant to kind of triage initial, uh, initial level of calls and, you know, the cases as they come in to the IT help desk. You know, but with, with the, the budget already being eleven percent, that was a position that was cut.
So even with fifty grand cut out, it's still a fifteen percent raise?
Correct, because we only funded half of that IT engineer position. Correct, because we only funded half of that IT engineer position last year, this, this forty-eight thousand dollars, that's an eighty thousand dollar a year position, roughly.
So, you're, you're getting some cost savings, but you're not, it's not, you're not getting credit for it?
Correct.
No, we're fine.
Yep. And then, when we go down to, is everyone good with the personnel side, I'll move down to services, contracts, okay, so down here, holy smokes, what's happening, we have a, you know, forty-nine point nine percent increase, okay, when we look at this, let me pull up the IT budget real quick, so we can just talk this through, and it's good, we have Julie Wilson here. Because some of this comes, she's an IT expert, that's where we're holding her out to be, okay, so if we come down here real quick, so, this, this column here, if everyone looks on the screen, this is twenty-twenty-five, this is twenty-twenty-six, so we added, and we'll get that, when we look at the EOC budget, you'll notice the cuts, these accounts, Frontier Landline, nine-one-one, AT&T, this utility communications contract for forty-one thousand, these are all coming over from the emergency management budget into IT, where they, you know, it's probably more appropriate for them to be, being IT-related expenses.
So, which, are you, are you looking at five-three-five-two-five, or what part are you looking at in this?
See this one-sixteen here, this, sorry, when I say one-sixteen, hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-six-sixty-three?
Yes.
Okay, so that, if you look at the screen real quick up here, Ann?
Yeah, I can't see.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
It should be in your budget book, flip to, flip to the section in the backup pages, it just kind of explains what are the, what are the costs.
Oh, okay.
He was one of the first to present, I remember, he said, "Watch out, because I'm absorbing all this stuff."
Yeah, correct.
Just makes more sense to have it in the IT budget than-
Correct.
Distribute it over different areas, so now you can really look at and focus on it and see how-
This is for the whole town, then?
Uh, yeah, yeah, with the exception of my department, which has some of my software in my budget, but next year I'll be giving it to, to Dan as well, to put it in his budget.
Is that the Board of Ed, or no?
No, Board of Ed's separate, Board of Ed's separate, yeah, Board of Ed's always separate.
This is the town, yeah.
But there was talk about, not consolidation, but efficiencies that could be found?
Um, oh, they're, they're, I mean, so, I was just on the phone earlier with the Board of Ed business manager, who was telling me that the two IT directors are talking, and so, you know, that's where the, the network switches, you know, that they have extra network switches, that's where that, that came from, so they're definitely looking to, you know, to collaborate more.
They're talking on that dark fiber.
Both ways.
So, while it looks like, you know, a scary fifty percent increase, there's a reason for it, it's not just we're adding contracts, you know, we're just, we're shuffling, shuffling the budgets to put money in the, or the expenses in the correct spot.
Okay.
Right?
Well, ideas to gain efficiencies, but-
And then the miscellaneous supplies for the town?
That is, if you remember our conversation about half an hour ago, you see that increase in the first selectment adjustment from eighty-two-hundred to thirty-four-eight-hundred, that twenty-six thousand six hundred dollars?
Correct.
That cut came from the computer replacement, so, and Dan's still not happy with that number, sorry, Dan, but the initial number to replace computers was thirty-five thousand, and I said, "Dan, this is a tough budget year, what can you do to help us?", and he goes, "Ha, thirty", I said, "Okay, twenty-six-six", and, and he took that, so it was a little offer and compromise there, but we're still hoping to, you know, maintain our computer replacement program, so that's where that, that twenty-six-six you see in miscellaneous supplies, the adjustment in the first Greg bar.
I see thirty-four-
I see thirty-four-eight.
As the first selectment budget, correct?
Yes.
Yep, so the adjustment of twenty-six-six should have really been thirty-five, so in talking with Dan, we cut it back nine grand, does that make sense to everybody?
No.
Okay, so, with everyone-
I see eighty-two-hundred going up to thirty-four.
Yep, yep, so if you pull up your, just the, the current year CIP, you'll notice the first line in, the third line in for IT, he had thirty-five thousand for computers, a computer replacement, since that's more of an operating thing, we took it out of the, out of the capital, we took thirty-five thousand out of capital and added twenty-six
To the operating.
In the operating.
That's-
You get, so, so, I mean, he got cut back ninety-four hundred dollars, but it was just kind of, you know, cuts have to come from somewhere.
The idea being that, you know, computer replacement is more in line with an operating expense, given-
Correct.
The lower cost of computers.
In today's day and age, a computer, you know, you drop it on the ground, you're gonna buy a new one.
I see thirty-five, and then I see thirty-four, so we're, I don't know where you're getting the other-
There is no, so his budget got reduced, right, so originally, so if you look, like, I know it's tough to see, but really what should have happened was, this should be, if we moved it over, right, if we moved the thirty-five over, your number would be forty-three-two-hundred, but instead of that, we only moved over twenty-six.
Got it.
So, he knew, you know, he, he worked with us on this, right, and the other eighty-two-hundred dollars, you know, it says miscellaneous supplies, but really that should be technical supplies for the department, he's buying monitors, keyboards, mice, HDMI cords, everything that goes into all of this.
Yeah, I think they're buying staples and paper, I'm like, wait a minute.
I mean, if there's one office that's digital, it's, it's the IT office.
Okay, so.
So, yeah, we moved it over, but we moved over, reduced them out, and we had a negotiation with him on that, he thinks, Dan thinks he can make that work.
Okay, understood.
So, it's still an improvement?
Yeah, no, I understand, I just didn't-
Yeah.
Couldn't figure it out.
No, it's tricky.
And it's also for, I know the big ticket item here, it may seem like, you know, monitors, keyboards, okay, those are a couple bucks, the big ones are hard drives, batteries, and then battery backups, so every computer, right, instead of it just crashing if the power dies, it's got, you know, like a batter, a little battery pack, so there's something that can keep the computer alive for a few minutes, everyone, and then, okay, so everyone's good with that line, the other IT services? Really quickly, you see that cut for forty-two-hundred, do you guys have a question?
No, there's just-
I, I have two of the same thing I put in for some reason. Yeah, that's all, that's all, you want one? All right, up to, okay, registrars now, are, are we good with IT?
I just wanted to touch on two things, the reason for the cut for GIS licensing, part of that, you see that, it's a forty-two-hundred dollar cut there, the reason there's a cut in that budget, if you remember on the CIP, if we go back to the CIP here, on the first couple lines, land use map digitization project for fifty thousand dollars, that wasn't a one-time expense, that came with a forty-two-hundred dollar price tag every year to store that data, okay, so when we cut the digitization project out for the land use office, we were able to cut this forty-two-hundred dollars out as well, okay, so just, just so everyone's aware of that, and then the increase really to the, I know this other one here for police, EMD, FMO, IT support, a big driver of that, and we have Chief Masek behind me, but a big driver of that is the increase to Axon, if you look in your notes or right here on the screen, you will notice our Axon contract went from thirty-six thousand dollars to eighty-four-thousand-six-hundred dollars, okay, and Microsoft doubled from sixty-four hundred to eleven thousand, so that, that was the primary driver of that line, the Axon, and we initially had a three-year contract that ended, and is this, did we get another three-year contract?
It's a five-year contract, and initially, with the first round of Axon that, that was mandated by the state against unfunded liability, there was a small pool of money up at OPM that basically, it was, they threw a handful of quarters on the ground, and whoever was there first to pick them up, got them, the dollar amount we got at that time was very nominal, that it doesn't exist anymore, that was a one-time thing to get departments who weren't utilizing the system, some incentive to, to try to hurry up and implement it and get in line with the new bills and the law that had passed, so with us signing a new contract, I was able to commit to it a little bit earlier, and that saved us overall, if I, if I brought that whole document here, forty-seven thousand dollars, if we waited further, another six to eight months, this over five-year bill would have been another forty-seven thousand on top of what it currently is, which is about four-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars that we are mandated to, to deal with for the body cams and the in-car cameras.
Thank you.
All right, so we good with IT?
Yeah.
You good? Okay, registrars?
The reduction is due to, we are no longer in a federal election cycle, so we're able to realize some savings there.
Just election day expenses went up, but I think that's because you have the early voting, things like that.
Correct, that's the large driver of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty straightforward, anything else on that? Just a probate?
That's pretty straightforward.
Straightforward, yep. Maintenance of town buildings, section one thirteen. One of the drivers is, you see the electricity, thirty-four percent.
Just so everyone's aware, for that line, Dan? We are, so while the electric is up about a hundred thousand dollars, that's anticipated to end April first, so as we get closer to that deadline, we're gonna, you know, I'd, I'd recommend leaving it in until we know for certain that's coming out, but I think we could potentially realize, you know, eighty to ninety thousand dollars of savings there.
Why?
Why?
Why would it end April first?
That's the proposal, is to end, I think PURA is ending April first, so that's the paperwork I have right now, it's anticipated to end April first, but God forbid it gets extended, and we don't have the budget for it, we'll be, we'll be short there, so that's just something to keep in mind, that we could have some cost savings there.
So, so hopefully it'll end April first.
Yep, that's an account where we monitor, you know, I monitor all the time.
Well, that'll help everybody, both in the budget and personal budgets too, right? Okay.
All right, meat and potatoes, general government. And I think, let me just look at my numbers here, shut off my screen for a second, I think we can cut from the FICA and Medicare, let me just, let me just verify, everybody. So, at the very bottom of this work paper I have, I can show everybody here.
While you're looking at that, I have something here, health insurance went up twenty-one percent, is that?
We can, we can, yeah, yeah, well, it's going up eleven percent anticipated, but don't forget there's also additional employees we're adding to that, okay, so let me just pull up real quick.
And that also still may come down.
God willing, yep, yep.
Yeah, I'm holding out for the date, yeah.
Okay, so for FICA and Medicare, what is the number, yours, it's one million sixty-six?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we can cut it back to a million fifteen. Fifty-one thousand? Fifty thousand?
And why is that?
Um, so, if you look at my work paper up here, so at the very bottom of the work paper, I don't think, I don't think it prints for you guys, but at the very bottom, I break out the budget into salaries, personnel benefits, other town operations, library, debt service and capital, so when we look at the town salaries, we're looking at twelve-point-seven million dollars, let me just look at why these numbers are different.
All right, I gotta differ to fifty-one thousand.
Hold on one second, I just want to verify. Oh, okay, yeah, I think, I think one million fifteen would get us there.
So, would we, that would be a reduction of?
I have fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one thousand.
Is that what you have?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
So, you know what, in this tough budget year, if you want to cut it to a million flat, the idea being that usually we have at least one, if not two, terminations or retirements or whatever throughout the year, and usually we never hit that full salary number, I think, you know, fifteen thousand's two hundred thousand.
Reduce it by sixty-six?
I, I think you can cut it back, I think you can cut that to sixty-six thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I could, I'd be comfortable with that.
Is that a good intention? Do you hear motion?
Yeah, sure, I'll move under government miscellaneous and benefits under FICA Medicare, number five-two-two-zero-zero, to reduce the FICA Medicare from one million sixty-six-thousand dollars down to one million dollars, which is a reduction of sixty-six thousand dollars.
I'll second.
We have a second, any, any further, any discussion? We all okay with that, all right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, being the motion carries, great.
All right, do we want to walk through this list here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, workers' compensation is contractually obligated through KERMA at three percent, the reason why we're at three-and-a-half percent is because as you add individuals, that is not inclusive in that three percent, right, and in our anticipated budget, we're adding one-point-five firemen, so that's the other half percent really, and then, you know, God forbid, our, our workers' comp audit, they find adjustments or something, there's just, that's kind of a narrow budget, so that's what that's for. When we get down to pension, I'm going to change the name of this, so no one is confused anymore, because it's confused the crap out of me for a year, so it's pension slash retirement, right, there's two prongs to retirement, there's the pension piece, pension piece, which is a defined benefit, most of the unions, with the exception of the fireman, Fireman's Union, which is now DC, which is defined contribution, there's defined contribution, defined benefit, when you hear defined benefit, that's a pension, when you hear defined contribution, that's a 401A or a 401K for, you know, those in the private sector, and for the town, it's a 401, 401A, and the 457, those are defined contributions, so the town knows upfront right away what our contribution has to be in our liability, that defined benefit has that liability piece of it, right, so this, this takes into both accounts, if we pull up the spreadsheet for that, we are projecting a million dollars, the pension payment to, that the town has to make is going to be a million dollars, okay, how is that divvied up, well, if we use the same allocation from the prior year, this is the spread, this is the, this is the allocation, right, well, non-affiliated employees either get seven, eight or nine percent of contribution into their 401s, right, so not everybody's in the pension, only certain union employees are in the pension, all right, and then, with the exception of one or two non-affiliates that have been here for an extended period of time, so, when we look down here, this is the calculation we're looking at, we are pulling, boy, hold on a second. We're pulling the firefighter, police, unaffiliated municipal, library and dispatch, plus the three-fifty payment to the non-affiliates, that gives us our one-point-one million, or one-point-oh-oh-one million, okay?
I have a question, being a teacher, I understand it's 403B-
Yep.
Which does not receive contribution.
We don't have any 403Bs here.
Board of Ed doesn't have 403Bs?
No, they do their own accounting for that, so the, this is strict, when you look, when you see the Board of Ed here in this capacity, this, that top part is just the allocation of the employer portion of the pension payment we have to make, right, so that million dollars you see, that, that seven-ninety-seven is what we just had to make this past December.
This is the pension, not the 403Bs.
We don't do, so, when you, when you, when you look at this general government, this, the only piece of this that has Board of Ed is just that one little sliver of the pension right there, oh, I don't deal, Mariana Stevens and the Board of Ed handle the teachers' 403Bs, this is just town-side retirement benefits.
So, this is like employees for Board, for Board of Ed that are not teachers?
They, no, so, that line there, I'm just showing you how I proofed it out, right, I'm just showing you how I, how the million dollars is spread, this has no impact on our budget.
The place I'm working, the understanding I'm working with is that, as a teacher in Connecticut, I pay into a 403B, which does not have a contribution from the employer, because there is a teacher's retirement board, which you can opt to pay into, this is all new to you, correct?
It's not new to me, but it is outside of my wheelhouse.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's a, so, you know, if I just minimize that.
An entity that does not pay its teachers' contributions, that's the highest-
That's, I think paras are in there, I think, everybody else besides those teachers are in there.
Okay.
Yep.
That makes sense to me, now, thank you.
Yeah, they have a couple hundred employees in there.
Yeah.
Yep.
I guess that's a teacher goggles I have on, that everyone in a school must be a teacher.
Yeah. Okay, so, and then, just so everyone's aware, part of this increase in this, you know, budget we're dealing with here, is this- budget we're dealing with here, is this anticipated fifty-three thousand from the library, the town's now absorbing that, whereas last year, remember, I think I, I mentioned that, the, so we fund the library almost like ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, we send the money to them, and then a week after I send them the money, I ask for money back. So we're just cutting out the, that back and forth with depositing a check, cutting a check. So this is just kind of.
Save on posted.
Yeah. So, but, but just so, the reason I bring this up is when you look at what we're, what we are, you know, funding the library as that, you know, operating grant, so to speak, that is not inclusive of this fifty thousand dollars, we're also kicking in, right? So, does anyone have any questions with the pension-retirement piece?
Got all mine out.
All right. So that answers these three. Life insurance, this is, the eighteen thousand here is just, I took the last bill we had, added a two percent inflation, 'cause they're pretty, they're pretty reasonable, and, you know, multiplied that by twelve, same with long-term disability, life insurance. Now, health insurance, let's get into this pain of a spreadsheet. So what we did this year, in, in years past, I'm not quite sure, you know, I can speak to last year's budget, but really, let me just show, so for, hold on a second, hold on a second. I don't wanna share wages on the screen. Let me just minimize some things. Not that it's not public information, I just don't need anyone's feelings hurt or anything. Okay. Just make sure there's nothing else on here. Okay, now we're good. Okay. So when we look at, so what, what I did, I tasked Mitch Nixon, my deputy finance director, to take one of our bills we have and put it in this spreadsheet here. Every individual we currently have working, what do they have? Do they have a family plan, employee plus one plan, a single employee plan, or do they get the stipend, okay? Or do they get nothing at all? So we mapped out every employee we have in the town, mapped them out, whether they get the, they're not, unfortunately, the selectmen don't get our health insurance. So, but everybody else, whether they're on the employee plus one plan, the single plan, where are they? When you go right to, so, and if you notice up top here, this is our charges, this is what we have to pay. So a family plan is about thirty-seven thousand dollars a year currently, okay? Next year, it's got a twelve percent inflation, twelve percent was even original when we were quoted. So next year, a family plan's gonna be over forty thousand dollars, okay? So, you know, these, this, it's quite a bit of money when you multiply it by hundreds of employees, right? So when we scroll down here to the bottom, what are we, what are we, what are we getting at? Oh, here's my breakdown of how many employees we have. So, monthly, we're billing two-hundred-and-forty-two thou-, we're collecting, or expensing two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars, sorry, that took a while to get out, okay? We're doing stipends of, um, hold on, let me just cut my screen for just one second, there's, there's labels to this.
So are you saying that if somebody doesn't take advantage of the health insurance, they get a stipend?
Correct, correct. So we have approximately twenty-six, oh, boy, oh no, we're out of trouble here. We got a time clock, guys, fifteen minutes before this thing kaputts. So we have twenty-six individuals on a stipend, we have forty-five employees that have the single coverage, twenty-eight employee plus one and forty-one family plans, okay? We're adding two to the budget, right? So we are getting thirty, we have, did I do calculation wrong? Oh no, that's going the wrong way. Okay, so we have thirty-eight family plans, so we're spending two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars roughly a month. We had these stipends annually, two-point-nine million dollars. Okay, just wanna make sure my calculation's right. And then there's a couple other things we pay for here. Retiree reimbursement, this is OPEB, you've probably heard that phrase before, so individuals, they don't have to, you know, certain individuals hired in a certain timeframe don't have to pay health insurance premiums, don't have to pay for their co-pays, the town has to pick them up as one of their benefits they receive, that's about twenty-four thousand dollars a year, I put a five thousand dollar little contingency in there. And then the other one, it's just such an X-factor at the moment, physicals for volunteer firefighters, okay? So in one instance, we had one firefighter, it was thirty-three hundred dollars, one firefighter was two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. So if we're getting, you know, twenty firefighters or volunteers that are taking this exam, five hundred a pop, five hundred a pop times twenty, ten thousand dollars, so maybe we could, maybe we could cut this back, but.
Are you talking about like, just like, they go to a doctor and have a physical? Is that what you mean?
Correct, well, they have to go to, they have to go to our, they have to go to our doctor, essentially, or our provider, I guess you'd call it, and they have to make sure, you have to make sure, they can't just hop on a fire truck anymore. They have to make sure their heart's good, they go through a full physical, and that's on us, because they're volunteers.
Understood, okay.
Okay, and, and our career guys do that as well.
Yep.
Okay, I don't know about police. That's a separate discussion. We're on a time clock here. OPEB disclosure, we have to fund an OPEB disclosure for fourteen thousand dollars. So, you know, there is some money here. So it's broken up by each union. So I, we can revisit this, I guess, as we shave, if we look at any positions we're cutting that are full-time, or proposed positions, right? This number can change, we can just plug and play here. But when, when you take in everything account, it's up, it's up to twenty percent. So. I mean, maybe I could, you know, I could drop the, what I'll do is, the proposal is between ten and twelve percent, I went with the high range of twelve, I can drop it back to eleven, that, that could shave off, you know, that could, that could shave off maybe a hundred grand or something like that, I'll, I'll take a look.
Health and dental?
Say that again, Dan? Yeah, the health and dental line, yep, that, that's, that's, those two lines are driving the majority of the budget increase. The, the pension, right, that's up a couple hundred thousand, and this health insurance.
And this is with the state pool that we were.
This is the state partnership plan two point.
We just talked about this the other night.
Yep.
Yeah. So there are, there's gonna be another moment where we get the final number.
All right, I'm gonna go grab my, oh god, I hope I didn't lose everything there.
Want a short recess? I just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want, you got, you got a charger? I got one in my office.
Um, I don't have a worksman, I'll just grab mine.
Okay.
Take a five-minute break? Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, let's, uh.
I don't have a charger.
What? Hold on, let me see what I got. What can I take, what can I take, a five-minute break?
Do I have to make a motion?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna take a five-minute break.
Second.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back on the record, we're back in session after a brief recess. And it's seven thirty-five.
All right, so what I will do for our Wednesday meeting is I will update the projection for eleven percent, and see what we can, we can reduce that by.
Okay.
But then if it comes in higher, then you just have to go back up. Why don't you just hold out till April, or, or until the last moment when they give you the?
We could do that too.
I would rather.
Yeah, then go back and forth, back and forth, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's too much of a, like, you know, you get happy and then you're like, nah, no, I'd rather be not and then happy at the end.
Okay.
So what are we, what are we thinking we're gonna do?
We'll just wait to see what the number comes in.
Yeah, I think that's better.
Okay.
Because otherwise with, with motions and then make motions again.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so did we wanna jump into legal services?
No, definitely not.
Thanks, guys. So transcripts, I think we talked about this last week. Does anyone, I guess, have any questions before I just walk through for a second time?
Any questions? We good? Or do we?
I have none, only because you touched on it last week, so that's the reason I feel, you know, pretty comfortable.
You're comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, then we'll, service contract, contracts, anything, uh? So we're, uh?
So the service contract, you know, unemployment, that's if there's something with somebody, insurance, everything here is just, you know, most of this is zero percent, with the exception of liability, the liability insurance that the town has, that goes up on average three percent, I believe it is. But with every vehicle we add, every piece of equipment we add, that comes in in addition to that three percent, right? So just something to keep in mind.
Next is services to community. Now, we had a packet that we took home last week. Do you wanna tackle this tonight?
Sure, do you have policy verbiage?
My bad, I said I was gonna put something together.
So, if you wanna do this in the, sorry, if you wanna do this in the budget, within the budget, we can do that and break it out on the Board of Selectment adjustments, or we can do kind of what we did last year, like, you know, where, where you vote and, at once, I'm trying to think how we did it last year.
Let's add notes, yeah.
You guys appropriated it. So it was the same, so it was just like this last year, that's why you said twenty-thousand-three, twenty-four.
Right.
And then the Board of Selectmen voted to spend that money on a, on that, on that worksheet, and then we spent it right out of that line, right? So does that make sense? So we have twenty-five thousand set aside.
Right.
In the budget. So, you know, at a later point, we can go through these and allocate the twenty-five thousand proposed to these departments.
So can we do that, wanna do that next, I'll, I'll try to put the.
Whatever, whatever.
For Wednesday, you mean?
Yeah, if we do it Wednesday, then remind me tomorrow to.
I'm gonna write it on here, Dan, I'll write it on here.
I'll come up, we, I had some notes that we talked about from the last meeting, so, um, yeah, I'm sorry.
I just have one thing on here, which we can clarify. The veterans' rep mileage reimbursement, we've got it here, but didn't we have that in previous?
Yeah, some of these got taken out.
Transferred, yeah. Oh, okay.
And then also things rally, no, was that?
No, we didn't move TVCCA.
No, I thought Memorial, Memorial Day got moved.
It did, yep.
Okay.
But I think they, they probably still submitted something, I imagine.
All right.
Okay.
So why don't we pass this, and then Wednesday, I'll have something for us to look at and, that'll be on my list for tomorrow.
So.
All right, so next up is zoning.
Zoning, okay.
Every line is flat, with the exception of the non-affiliated wages.
Yep.
We moved, we good? We good? We'll go to planning, similar?
Similar.
Everything but professional conventions and conferences is flat.
That's this finance department.
I had a question about the accounting software.
Sure.
Because it just went up seventy-six point four-two percent, it just seemed like an awful lot.
It is a lot. Hold on, let me just pull up the breakdown. So we have. I thought I broke it out somewhere, stand by. So we have a few additional softwares in the finance office, so we're implementing ADP. But at the same time of implementing ADP, we still have to pay for NOVA time, our sunsetting time and attendance system. So in next year, we should see us twenty-eight thousand in our savings from getting away with NOVA time. Right now, we need it, because we have to have two systems mirroring each other at the moment. Same with Munis and MCSJ. We're going to Munis for all accounting, you know, all the accounting functions and the accounting system. MCSJ will sunset as well. We currently are still using MCSJ for utility billing and payroll. Once we go live with ADP July one, we will know. Once we go live with ADP July one, we will no longer need NOVA time because we'll be in ADP. And then once utility billing also gets moved over to Munis, we will no longer need MCSJ. So next year, we're hoping to realize about forty-six thousand dollars in savings between those two lines.
If you're changing though to ADP July first...
It's year contracts.
Ah, okay.
So you, like, we, so I think it's February thirty, February twenty-eighth or March first or...
No, no, I get it now.
You know, so...
Okay, just want to make sure. All right, good.
Any other observations or questions? Suggestions?
I don't.
Okay. We good? Yeah? Contingency.
Kevin, could you just explain what the OPEB trust contribution is exactly?
Sure, so just as we, so for those that have ever visited the Pension Board page on the town's website, you'll know we get a valuation every year by our actuary.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we fund. Remember, we were looking at that, the line for pension and retirement, where we have to put a million dollars into the pension because we're funding it?
Yes.
Our pension is still about ninety percent funded, right? So that's why we're putting millions of dollars into it. We're trying to increase the funding rate or at least keep it where it is. We don't have a plan for OPEB. So right now, we have a three-point-five million dollar liability for OPEB. We don't fund it. We fund as we go. Right? So the idea is to set up a trust, so you start funding it. So you put the, you put a block of money aside, and then every year, you know, you deposit this money into that fund. It gets a return in the markets, right? Because most of the money's invested in the S and P five hundred or international. And then that, the interest in that fund pays for those OPEB expenses.
And that stands for other post...
Employment benefits.
Does that mean like health insurance or what is that?
Health insurance, yeah, so when an employee retires, you know, say John Smith retires, and he worked here in, you know, the eighties, retired in, you know, the early two thousands, half his health insurance is paid for by the town. They pick up half of it, in most cases. There might be individuals, I'm not sure that it's fully paid by us. I don't think so. I think it's fifty-fifty. Just what I can recall off the top of my head. But as mentioned, there's some employees that don't pay for their prescription copays. There's only a couple of them. But all that, you know, that's, right now, it's funding as we go. But really, what we should be doing is, we should be putting this money into a trust, establishing a trust, just like we have a pension trust. I mean, that's where you mentioned, you saw earlier in the health insurance line, we pay fourteen thousand dollars a year for the OPEB valuation, right? To tell us that we're not funding it. You have to do that, it's a requirement for our financial statements. But that's where I know we're three-point-five million dollars, we have a three-point-five million dollar liability.
Seventy-five hundred dollars enough? I'm not...
So the reason why we have the seventy-five hundred dollars here, Ann, is this is a placeholder essentially, right? So S and P and Moody's, when they rate us, when they rated us recently, they were looking for a few things from us. A coastal resiliency fund be established, the OPEB trust be established, and there was a third thing, cybersecurity, right? So you'll know in the, so we have the cybersecurity money a couple of budgets ago. Now we're funding the coastal resiliency fund and the OPEB trust fund. Now, just something I want to touch upon. We're putting twenty-five thousand in coastal resiliency fund. Branford is putting three hundred thousand dollars a year in the coastal resiliency fund. They're trying to build a coastal resiliency fund of one-point-five million dollars, right? We're trying to put twenty-five thousand in. So they're, and what they're trying to do is they're incorporating coastal resiliency into their capital projects and everything they do. So they know every road that's in the hundred-year flood plain, the five-hundred-year flood plain, or the FEMA map or whatever it's called, if there's a road in this, in wherever they are, you know, if there's a road that's under, you know, under this five-hundred-year flood, they're going to go through other steps besides just the normal steps to make sure that road's resilient, right? So that's something we're not even really incorporating right now, I'm pretty sure.
So, I mean...
I know it's a long diatribe, but...
My question is, is this adequate then?
Probably not, but it's a good start. We have never done it before.
Okay.
So the twenty-two thousand five hundred and the seventy-five hundred from last year are the first times we've attempted to even start funding these.
Okay.
Right?
All right, understood. Yep. No, I knew the coastal resiliency, I didn't know about the OPEB, I didn't realize that.
Yep.
Okay.
But both of those are so to enhance how we look when we get our rating.
Understood, yep, I got it.
Now, I just have a question, this is a little aside. For the capital policy that we're going to be looking at on Wednesday, Kevin, is that part of what they look at? Or that was the...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that's part of our plan.
And we're, and we're gonna be looking at that on our Wednesday meeting. With the capital asset policy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. I was, I was trying, I was, I was thinking about the capital projects. So Wednesday's meeting, what Dan's talking about is, that came from the audit, Dan?
Yeah.
And so one of the directors at CLA I'm working with, Mike Popham, who I know is listening to this, so shout out to Mike. For fun, he listens to this.
For fun?
For fun. See, Mike, I'm not the only one who thought you were kind of weird for that, but anyways. So, great guy, but, so one of the recommendations from our auditors was to establish a policy over our capital assets, you know, the fixed assets. So which you'll see on Monday's, Wednesday's agenda is a policy we're putting forth just to give us an outline of what's a capital item versus not a capital item. And it's just kind of like a financial-related policy, just to help the finance office determine what's, what should be capitalized and what should just be expended in the operating budget, right?
We had one of those discussions tonight about the computers.
Correct, yes, perfect example.
Example.
Perfect example. If, you know, if there's a single item for a thousand dollars, but you're buying twenty-five of them, do you capitalize it or not?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I know this big, you know, the auditor loves, the biggest discussion we've had, I feel like, is the roads, right? Because the town does a lot of road sealing and road chipping. And when you go to the GFOA website, it's discretionary. If you're chip sealing the whole road and you expect to extend the useful life, then it can be capitalized. If you're only chip sealing part of the road or crack sealing part of the road, but not the whole road, and you don't anticipate its useful life, you know, you're treating those differently. So, so we've had some great conversations in the finance office over this. So, and just so everyone, full circle, just so everyone knows what I'm talking about, our OPEB, currently our OPEB liability stands at three million dollars. You'll see in 2020, we had a liability of ten, almost ten million dollars. It's come as the older individuals, you know, pass on.
It'll go away eventually.
Yeah, well, it'll go away to some, yeah, eventually, you know, twenty, thirty years from now, it'll probably be very close to zero. But, you know, it's still a couple million dollars right now, and that's a totally unfunded liability we have on our books.
And as those individuals age, care gets more expensive.
Correct. That's that three-million-dollar number you see here, you know? So, I mean, the last year, we paid two-hundred thousand dollars out. So, just so I could show that to everybody. Okay.
Any questions on that?
Dan, excuse me, is it okay if we advance to get the chief of police in Merz Mansion out of here? Are they the only ones here tonight, or...
Oh, well, he should do that. Let's see.
We're almost there.
Let's see.
We're three hundred lines away.
I got two A's.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor, we can move it.
Okay, so if we just want to say we stopped at contingency, we're gonna work down and go back? That's, I don't think that's...
Yeah, yeah, all right, so we're gonna jump to, thank you, Don, for suggesting that.
Thank you.
Now, I...
Where else, where else would you guys be tonight on a Monday?
Not here.
Okay, so let's see.
Maybe at home watching this on YouTube with your friend.
Touche. Okay, so if you go down to two sixteen? Don with the number.
Two sixteen is public safety, please, okay.
So we could start with emergency management? Or what do you guys have?
I have public safety, police department.
Okay.
All right, wait, where's emergency management? In front of it?
I have two fourteen emergency management.
Yeah.
And I say...
So let's do that, we'll go, we'll do emerg, all right, yeah, emergency management, okay, very good. What did, what did we leave off with, I'm sorry?
Contingency.
Contingency, so we'll follow up with Board of Finance.
Board of Finance. What, section one?
One-twenty was contingency.
That's what we, all right.
What's this, what section is this? What number?
Two fourteen.
Okay, so now we're jumping to two fourteen. Okay, and that's public safety, emergency management.
Yeah, so when we look at emergency management, the only, the only cut that was made was to the part-time administrative assistant.
And why was that?
It really came down to budgetary constraints and not adding to the employee count. The only two employees we added to this year's budget in total was the one-point-five firemen. So every department that requests, I mean, I would say it was probably north of a dozen requests for additional employees, and the only one that received additional employees was the fire department.
I have no questions for Julie.
You're good?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, then we will go...
Thank you, everyone.
Ren, I'm your lady, have a good night.
I'm glad you jumped ahead so you didn't have to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. All right, then we'll go to two fifteen. Let's see, dispatch?
Is that dispatch?
Yeah, but he's, he's...
Sorry, he's dispatch.
Bye, good night, Julie, thank you for all you do.
Well, we'll just do it. Usually not too...
So there was no cuts to the dispatch budget?
Yeah.
It's just overtime.
There's just longevity shift differential changes, yeah.
Yeah, but...
I have no questions for you.
Okay, all right. Then we'll go right to the public safety, police department.
I just had, I guess, under police officers, there was an increase of eleven point seven-seven percent. That was the only thing.
So if you...
I actually had a question about...
Oh, no, I was letting you, I was letting you finish, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That was the only thing I would have a question about.
So the eleven percent, there's no additional police officers in that budget. The eleven percent is driven largely by the unbudgeted holiday pay that the police officers are entitled to. That totals a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. So right off the rip, before any fire, any police officers get an increase in pay, which is also in there, a hundred-and-forty thousand, essentially two police officers, was unfunded, the holiday pay was unfunded. Unbudgeted, unbudgeted.
Unbudgeted.
It was funded, we paid it.
Yeah, yeah.
But...
But now, we're doing, we're doing it the right way now. This is, it should be here.
Correct.
And before, it really wasn't being accounted for.
Okay.
Right?
And the only other thing was on the...
And a lot of the cuts that were made were due to, the new police officers would have had increased training, uniforms, you know, supplies, things like that.
So we, the police commission...
No one can, no one can hear you at home.
The police commission had asked for us to, you know, they had a plan set in place years ago trying to get, you know, do two officers per year. So with, you know, realizing the, the holiday pay, obviously that was up one forty, that almost equals a total of, you know, two individual officers. That being increased, so there's corresponding decreases in other lines, right? So there's, there's weapons, there's uniforms, there's tasers, all of those things, or some training. So that's where, once that was cut out, we're gonna see the other reduced cuts through the rest of the budget to compensate for not adding those two officers this year.
And there was one other cut for the police accreditation, was it, what was, Kalia or something? Kalia?
And then, I think we managed, I have a change penciled in here on prisoner expenses. I think we reduced the meals a little bit.
We did, I never put that in, it was two hundred bucks, I think.
Yeah, so I have forty-three hundred for, for segment proposed for prisoner meals.
I never...
We were outsourcing the meals for the prisoners, and, you know, McDonald's is no longer, for a cheeseburger, fry, and water, three dollars each meal. And sometimes we have prisoners with us, holiday weekend, it could be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that's three meals per day, that's nine that we have to actually tend by Monday morning or Tuesday morning. It's getting very expensive. So I found an alternative source, spoken to a couple of other departments. We're gonna look and see if we can't consolidate an order. We've done a charge count with Stop and Shop here in town, but with Stop and Shop overall, so if there's a few of our departments doing that and getting the meals and holding them already at the department at a greatly reduced cost, if we can, you know, collaborate and get a few towns, maybe Stop and Shop will even make a better deal with us if we do like a bulk order.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So...
And so this also, just so everyone knows, that line also pays for the cleaning of the cells, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's just, you just got like a seven-hundred-dollar bill?
We did, yeah.
Okay, so I just...
So that, that's a moving target. There's no way to say, hey, we can look at the previous year, but this year it could be a mess, next year it could be nothing, or it could blow this up, right? And then I just look at, you know, doing a budget transfers, you know, throughout the course of the year until...
See, we just cleaned, we just got a bill, I think, for one of the cells was contaminated, and it was like seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, so there is, yes.
And that's one, one day.
Yeah, somebody made quite a mess in there.
Yeah.
Biohazard, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. So Dan, I just want to let you know, that two hundred bucks we originally proposed, we didn't have that in the budget. That, so there's, we, it's, the counts were stored at forty-five hundred.
Oh, was restored?
Yeah, yeah. So I just want that, so that was done after we submitted your budget. So if you want that cut, you know, this board needs to vote on that, but...
Okay, that was a...
Correct.
Yeah, it's a, you know...
So I just want you to know that forty-three hundred's not the real number, it's forty-five hundred.
It's really forty-five hundred.
Correct, correct. It's two hundred dollars in the grand scheme of things, but I just want you to know that. Because you said it, I wanted to...
Appreciate that. Any interest in reducing it by two hundred bucks, or is it...
No, I'd like to keep it at forty-five.
Just leave it at forty-five?
Yeah.
Very good.
It also does, yeah.
Yeah, I think, two hundred bucks is what it matters.
It does all the supplies within, that we deal with.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
The majority of the time, we're transferring into that line, so, you know...
I don't think it's gonna make us or break us.
I don't know.
That was two sixteen, I believe.
Fifty-six, one oh three was the...
Is there anything else that, Mike, you do?
ACO.
Animal control.
And what number, oh, I see it, got it. Two twenty-six, is that it?
Yeah.
And there was two cuts the first selectman made.
Yeah.
One to vet services, veterinary services, and the other to training.
Where was this on?
What's the budget number?
One of, two one five.
Two two six.
Well, two two six.
I'm sorry, I'm going off the...
We have Munis now. There's new account number, sorry. They're not even good over there, buddy.
All right, so then, so that's really, that's, that's it for the police.
Yeah, and no, no questions for animal control?
So there's two full-time animal control officers for Waterford and Meas line?
Correct.
And then we pay like half of it?
It's, right, this is, it's fifty percent, so the salary, the overtime, so essentially what I do at the end of, of the, close to the very end of the fiscal year is provide a document to Kevin to finance that every, every week, every pay week that they go through, we have, we track, we track overtime expenses, their salary expenses. So that way, I give him a spreadsheet, he looks at that, we reconcile it, and then submit basically the fifty percent bill to the town of Waterford.
So does Waterford pay it upfront and then we reimburse them?
They pay the first, like, first week of July. They pay us for the prior year. And one thing to note is overtime is split by the town, so it's not fifty-fifty. So majority of overtime is...
Well, there's, one of the ACOs had a health issue this year, so the other ACO had to step in more frequently than, than would be normal. So that's why we're seeing a little bit of an uptick in the, in our overtime expense.
So everything's fifty-fifty, with the exception of overtime? It's billed to where they're actually going on the call?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do we all stop?
Thank you. Thank you.
I know.
Sorry to keep you so late. Should have taken you guys first, I didn't even think of it.
Don, thank you for that. That's a good idea. All right, we're going back to what number?
The one after contingency.
Port of one one eight, I believe?
One one six.
Well, that was close.
One two six, thank you.
One two six, thank you for that.
Oh, that's a tough one.
No, we're going to Board of Finance.
Oh, here we go.
Don't think Board of Finance is just the audit services?
Yeah, that's the audit, that's what they are.
Yeah.
It is what it is, right?
So we good with that?
Do we still have the same auditor?
We do for, so currently, we're in the twenty... We do for, so currently we're in the 23 audit, we're trying to get that finished, and then we're going to go to 24 is what, is still with CLA because we signed a five-year agreement with them. The 2025 will be RFP'd, once we get kind of midway through the 2024 audit.
Are we required to switch auditors over a period of time by law?
I don't know if, we're definitely required, you know, to go to RFP, and we have to report the appointment of our auditor to the State of Connecticut OPM office, so they know who our auditor is.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a requirement to switch every so often, but it's probably best practice every once in a while to, you know, throw in a different firm, just get a fresh set of eyes, but. Not saying we should do that, Mike.
No, I just didn't know what the regulations were, if there were any. Board of Finance, all right, that's that.
Board of Assessment Appeals, is that next? That was pretty.
Zip by that one?
Yeah.
CBA?
CBA is flat, 700 bucks.
Inland Wetlands?
Some of these smaller, you know, agencies that don't really have a, someone, they, they don't really submit things, they usually just roll it year over year based on actuals.
Yeah.
So. Inland Wetlands.
Brookside Farm?
I think we're in Waterford and Measline shop, is that?
Oh, I'm sure.
Oh, real quick, I don't.
No, I guess not, I don't have anything.
I just want to point out, I don't know if it's in there, but I just want everyone to know, the fair, we did add a fair rent commission section for 2,400, $2,900. I don't know, I can't remember off the top of my head if Sue Spang helped me put them in there, I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, it might be on me. I don't know if you have a fair rent commission tab.
I don't think.
Because it would be right there, so I can present that, I can give you guys copies of that.
No, I don't remember the year one yet.
Okay, so.
I'll look at that Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, so essentially it's part-time clerical for $2,400, and then miscellaneous supplies for $500. So there's not much to it, but I just want you to know, if you don't, if you didn't, that's why you didn't, you know.
I appreciate you pointing.
It was a new, it was a new commission we've added to the budget, so.
So I'll go in that, in that area.
Brookside Farm then?
What number?
Everything's flat, with the exception of the non-affiliated salaries?
Yep. Town Building Committee?
So Town Building Committee, every year, you know, two years ago they had 750, $750 budget, and then 450 dollars, we've, I don't think they've had a meeting since I've been employed here at the town, so I, I think, you know, 250 is more than adequate to cover.
They only meet when we actually have a project, yeah, instruction.
Correct.
Harbor Manager?
Harbor Management is now in its own fund. The reason why you see that is because it has actuals for 2024, so next year, when this drops off, you will not see it in your budget.
They have their own fund?
They have their own fund, yep, per state guidelines.
Okay. Conservation of Natural Resources?
Yeah. It's pretty flat.
Flat. Historic Properties, good progress. Historic Properties.
Okay, I have to make a, we, well, let me talk about it first. If we pull up Historic Properties Commission real quick, I did make a little oopsie here to the, to the wrong way of $1,000. So I just want to say.
Nice work with you.
Well, you better increase unemployment expense. But, so I, I just want it to be known that it should be, let me just pull it up, I think it was, so when you add 2,500 plus 3,500, that is not 5,000, that's at $6,000, so falling on that sword.
As it gets weirder, you just get funnier.
I'm practicing my comedic routine too, in case this career doesn't work out. So the Cemetery and Society expense, so remember we moved a few, so that's $1,000 off.
Cemetery maintenance you're talking about?
It's, that's, so there's two lines there, it's cemetery, EL Cemetery Association and Historic Society, it should be 6,000, not 5,000, so I, you know, if we could get that adjusted, that would make them happy.
Do you need, you need a motion?
Correct, yeah.
That's cemetery maintenance you're talking about?
Correct, yep, yep, and which, which, you know, a not-for-profit is nice enough to do that for us, but technically that's a town responsibility.
And what about, just before we do that motion, what about miscellaneous supplies? That seems like, I have $7,600.
Correct, so that's not quite miscellaneous. So that is going to be used to repair the east side of the house, seal the cedar roof and repair the fencing. So Betsy Getch kind of spearheads the budget for Historic Properties.
Why does it go into the supplies line and not the maintenance line, because it's really maintaining the property?
It could go there, it could go there, it was just, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you're.
Just so we know what it is, I was like, how many paper clips can you buy?
These are like, these are such like one-off accounts, you know, they don't, they don't buy a dollar of, you know, actual like office supplies, right?
All right, all right, let me, I'll make a motion to Historic Properties Commission, line 58100 Cemetery Maintenance, to change the $5,000 to $6,000, and which would be an increase of $1,000.
I'll second.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Let's see, Public Safety, we just did that one. Okay, we did dispatch.
So next is East Line Fire Service?
That's the next one, yep.
Fire Marshal? Fire Marshal's zeroed out now.
Okay, good.
Yep. Same with East Line, Niantic and Flanders, it's all rolled up into one now. Just verify that. Correct.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so it is.
So just so everyone knows too, so when you look at the Niantic, the Niantic and Flanders budget from last year, there was miscellaneous supplies for $6,000 for volunteer expenses. We've moved that up, there's a line now right closer to the bottom of the East Line Fire Service called volunteer expenses. We originally put 20,000 in, and then, you know, in the budget process, we cut it back to the 12, the same as last year.
What about, maybe, I don't know if you're talking about this, miscellaneous supplies, $10,000, do you, do you know what, like, that doubled?
Yeah.
From 5,000 to 10,000.
So I think the idea behind that was, if I'm not mistaken, their budget, so, and if you, if you flip to the, or if you look at the screen here, this Fire Marshal budget consolidated, the Fire Marshal, the Flanders and Niantic budgets all consolidated into East Line Fire.
So it's for all of that?
So it's for everything, for all, you know, the, you know, for all of those. It's all been combined.
Thank you.
So, I don't want to speak for the Chief and Deputy Chief, but if anyone has any questions with this, I've only probably spent 500 hours on the fire service in the last year.
Let's see.
Are you aware overtime is? I'm just kidding.
Everyone's getting tired.
So, I'm just looking at. Administrative Assistant went up 46.24%.
So with the adoption and establishment of the East Line Fire Service, we are moving the part-time clerical assistant to full-time. The person has been moved full-time in this current budget year to 30 hours a week approximately, but with the budget here, it'll, it'll move that position to full-time. So this person is responsible for the billings of the Fire Marshal, you know, on top of their normal, it just, this position has a number of.
Different parts.
Yeah, yeah.
Understood.
Trying to get the words out there.
Yeah. And overtime, do you foresee that going down for the next year, based upon the new contract, or no?
No, I don't.
No.
So just so everyone knows what's driving the overtime number, oh, you good, Dan? Okay, sorry. Just making sure you guys are good over there. So what's driving the overtime number really is, if you think about it, we have four firemen on any given time. If one of those firemen takes a shift off, you're, you're doing 24 hours of overtime, so one shift becomes 36 hours, right? You know, of straight time, essentially. You need a minimum staffing of four firemen, so we have to staff the, the four firemen positions, you have two in Flanders, two in Niantic, and then during the day, for, you know, for, if we have a part-time person, we put them down at Station Two with the EMTs that are down there from the East Line Ambulance Association, so they're not, you know, by themselves in that firehouse. The only way we could, not the only way, but one of the ways we could reduce overtime is by hiring, if we went to six, I know this, wait for this, if we go to six firemen, okay, if you go to six firemen on a shift, two, two and two, if one fireman, you know, calls out, you have five firemen, you would end up moving that fireman that's by himself at a firehouse to one of the other two stations, right? Instead of hire, you know, bring, someone calling someone in with that six firemen, right? So that would reduce overtime because you wouldn't be filling that shift. Well, so it saves us overtime, but now you are paying for 18 firemen instead of 12 firemen, right? So it, it's kind of a balancing act, does that make sense?
Why are you paying for a white?
There's also a built-in Kelly Day.
The Saturday Kelly Day.
Okay, so that's a built-in issue.
Overtime day, yep. Well, if, if we don't have part-timers to fill it, which right now is one of our staffing issues.
Right, so if you have a volunteer person that's willing to do it, it's a certain amount of money, but if, the bottom line is, is that it has to be staffed. So why would anybody take it voluntarily when they know that they're just going to be called in and they're going to get double time and half?
For the career guys, yeah, for sure.
Oh, 100.
Yeah.
The, the contract itself, when is the contract actually up?
Next, next, next June, oh, we was a year behind though, so.
Right.
You know, so it's June 1st, 2023 through June 30, '26. So we've got 16 months left.
Contract negotiations are key, and when you're talking about the schedule, and I, I've immersed myself in trying to learn, because this is a gnarly situation with the firehouse and all of the moving parts and intricacies, but having people at a table to negotiate a contract, working together to try to get to the best resolve is, is smart, and just kind of unpacking certain things that I was not aware of, okay, of contract negotiations, because we're given something and, oh, this is great and this is wonderful, and then how many months down the line, then we're listening to, all right, hold on a second, this is not as wonderful and great as it was at least put to me, and now we have to deal with all of these other things that very well could have been, could not have happened, and, and that comes from negotiations. So, you know, when you, so when negotiations come up, I, the only experience that I do have actually is in 10 years of actually negotiating with teacher contracts along with your legal team, and we've always had, or the district had representatives that served on that. That doesn't seem to be the process here, it seems as though it's just the first selectman and maybe a lawyer, I'm not too sure, but moving forward, I would suggest that maybe one representative from the Board of Selectmen sit in onto that and help negotiate the contracts. I'm, I'm just going to put that out there. I feel like we're kind of back into a corner at the moment, to be honest with you, I don't know how anybody else feels, but it's a tremendous amount of money, and it, it's going to continue to be, I think, a problem, to be honest with you.
So just so everyone knows, for all contract negotiations, not just the fire service, it's the first selectman, the finance director, the HR director, and then the department heads of the particular departments that the union represents. So right now we're in UPSU negotiations, so we have the Public Works Director, the Parking Rec Director, myself, the HR Director, the first selectman, and the Town's Labor Attorney, so. Yeah, this, that, that contract took nearly two years to negotiate.
I got it, but.
Oh, I hear you.
We have a Kelly Day that's written in there, that's really coming back to smack us, and it could have been alleviated, and I know that negotiations is hard, I'm not saying that anybody did anything wrong, but maybe it could have been alleviated and not locking us in, because we're locked in.
Well, there were, go ahead. Well, I had some informal conversations with some people down at the fire hall, and I don't know, I, I made clear I was not representing the Board of Selectmen, I just, like you, wanted to know the ins and outs, and my understanding is that there's a couple different ways to set up shifts with time on and time off, and the town wanted the current one, which was given to them in the contract, but there's another way of doing shifts, and none of the men I spoke with were able to articulate why it was advantageous for the town to do this, because it created this Kelly Day.
Correct.
Could you give us information as to why?
So, sure, the other options on the table, the, the current staffing model was not really working, so we were on a five, so we were on a nine-hour, five-day work week for our firemen, so they were, they were working nine hours a day, but the majority of those firemen, a lot of them were being mandatoried in for night if there was no one there, and they're working five days a week, the proposed schedule and really the, one of the best practice schedules coming out for the fire services across the nation is that you're at 24 on, 48 off, but the gold standard is 24 on, 72 off, okay? With a 24-48 schedule, 24 hours on, 48 hours off, the Fair Labor Standards Act, FLSA, you've probably heard that before, comes into play. So what would have happened, if we stuck with a 24-48 schedule around the clock, we still would be paying them overtime for the last two shifts of the month, right? So how it works is, a fireman has to work, I think it's 256 hours in a 28-day period before they hit mandatory overtime, or 213, and we would have been at 256, I think is what it was, just off the top of my head. So with the idea of, what the, what the fire union was trying to go for, and what they, you know, across the nation, is the 24-72. What that means is, you have four shifts of firemen. We currently are trying to fund for three, right? So whereas right now we have 11 firemen, we're looking for 12 and 13, essentially we're trying either to get to 15 firemen, so you have three shifts of five firemen, right? Or you're trying to get to 18 and get three shifts of six firemen, okay? If we went to a 24-72 schedule, you would need four shifts of firemen, and if you need a minimum of four, you would need 16 firemen, right? So, I mean, that's, and you'd get rid of the Kelly Day, but you'd have to hire on 16 firemen, right? And that's for a minimum staffing of four around the clock.
And since we're adding one and a half, or proposed adding one and a half this year, maybe that's like a stretch goal for a couple of years away?
Yeah, so in the, I don't know if it was included in here, but in the fire service budget, we built, oh, I got loud, we built out, let me just pull it up here, it is 1054205. We built out kind of our proposed plan for firemen, so there's a long-term tab here. So the proposal is to get to the 18 firemen. So we're trying to get to 18 firemen on a 24-70, a 24-48 schedule, so we're trying to get three crews of six firemen, that's our current proposal, that's our long-term strategic plan here. So we are trying to hire fire 12, fireman 12, July 1, fireman 13 halfway through the year, so that's 1.5 full-time equivalents. The next year, if we hire firefighter 14, July 1, firefighter 15, Jan 1, that will make us, in the budget, have two firemen, because they're absorbing half from this year for that, for the one that's hired in January, and then on the backside, that fireman 15, half of that salary. Does that make sense?
Yes, I'm just seeing that the numbers aren't going to be divisible by four anytime in the near future, so it looks like we are stuck with the 24-48 hour issue for the foreseeable future. How long does the contract go for?
Contract expires 6/30/26.
Okay, so this is going to be an issue in the next round of, of negotiations.
Well, this is one of, 6/30/26. So we, we, by the time we negotiated the contract, we negotiated the contract, it was a year behind, right? So we didn't negotiate the contract until July 2024, but that contract expired July 1, 2023, right? So we had a year that the contract went backwards for, you know, retro pay and retro calculations and things like that.
Doing the right thing, but it's hard to do.
Well, you know, when you make a transition to a different system, you're going to have a transition period, and it's very difficult to make that transition. you're going to have a transition period, and it's very difficult to make that transition. And it was important, I felt, that we get on to this twenty-four schedule, twenty-four, forty-eight, twenty-four, seventy-two. But it allowed, it allows us to attract firefighters from other departments that, that are on that schedule. And, you know, those squeeze in a day, it, it, it works for us attracting other firefighters to the service. The other thing was, you know, in any negotiations, there's a back and forth. And, and the fire service, they did make concessions. And we finally arrived at a point that it would allow us to start to move into the future. And, yeah, it's, you know, it, it's expensive to have a full-time fire service, but.
You'd only call without it.
Well, we have to have it, and, you know, it's, it's very hard to, you can't rely on volunteers in a town this size. And so we're trying to move in the right direction and do it in a way that the town can afford.
Now, are we staffing the ambulance service as well now?
So.
Are we staffing the ambulance service?
On a private duty rate. So we don't, our, our firemen no longer get in the ambulance unless we are contracted by the Eastside Ambulance to get in there. But just two things real quick, for, to Jason's point, the divisible by four. We get there, firefighter sixteen, and this proposal would be hired July one, twenty, twenty-seven, which coincides with the new contract.
Oh, okay, we have a plan.
So there, there is a little bit of a plan here because the firemen have expressed interest in this twenty-four, forty, seventy-two schedule. So, but the problem is, by going to sixteen firemen and going, reverting to this twenty-four, seventy-two schedule, we're still at four firemen a shift, right? So the idea to bolster it to eighteen, to get six on per shift, so two, two and two, if the contract gets negotiated to a twenty-four, seventy-two schedule, I'm not saying it is, right? That's all. But I'm just saying, you know, there's a plan in here to get us to that, four shifts of four, if need be.
Okay.
But it's incremental and, and, you know, so we don't feel hurt all at once.
And then the, the second part was overtime. The breakdown of overtime, there's a, you know, a few pieces of it, there's three essentially. One is the accrued time off that we have to cover, you know, sick time vacationing, things like that, or if there's an injury. But, so there's three buckets, you know, it's the normal overtime, so to speak. There's the storm and event coverage, which is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We put more firemen on. And then, you're, you're right, Candace, there is that hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for Saturdays. Saturdays do kill our overtime line. So of the five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and ten thousand, you know, I don't know what one eighty-two divided by five-ten is. But forty percent, thirty-five percent? I'm going to say thirty-five percent is the Saturday.
Okay, can I ask a question? So for the fire chiefs, marshals, and deputies, so.
Oh, I'm good.
In my world, if the coverage can't be found, management gets pulled in. So can they be pulled in to work Saturdays?
Non-union employees cannot take the job of a, of a firefighter, of a union firefighter.
Okay.
They, you know what? They could in a part-time capacity. I don't, I don't really know the legalities, that's a good question, I don't know the legalities of that.
Maybe we should find out.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be an interesting one. But I would just like to point out, I said thirty-five percent, off the top of my head, it was thirty-five point eight percent.
Good job. But the, to answer your question about the ambulance service, they're fully independent of us now. With the exception of, per diem rate, if we, if we do staff an ambulance, they're paying us an hourly rate.
Plus fringe, you know, fringe and everything.
Fringe, yeah.
So it's not, we're not making money off them, but it's just, you know, that we're trying to not absorb a.
We're not doing it for free.
Correct.
Anymore.
Yep. In the month of, in the month of January, I think we billed them twenty-three thousand dollars in private duty overtime. And I think in the month of February, it was closer to the ten thousand dollar range, so.
So it's moving the right way.
It appears they're, they're starting to staff their own ambulances, they're becoming a, a full service of their own.
Yeah, which is what we wanted. Any other, any other questions on the fire service? Candace, anything else, or are you satisfied in the moment?
I'm not satisfied with it, but I can't, I can't see anything that I can scratch.
What's that?
I can't see anything that I can actually take off.
Yeah. Okay.
And just so everyone knows, last one, Dan, just to touch upon, the, the, the first line in the operating expense, that fire hydrant maintenance, that was moved a year ago from building maintenance, which maintains the buildings in, you know, town hall and community center. Somehow that budget got stuck with the fire hydrant maintenance line that we revert, that we pay over to water and sewer. So it, it should really be in the fire service budget, right? Because that's why we're getting this bill, it's to make sure there's, you know, the hydrants are working properly and make sure they're flushed. In conjunction with the water and sewer department, or the Water and Sewer Commission, I should say, years ago, that budget was slashed a significant amount, and it still hasn't been restored to the level it was back in the early two thousands. So that's why you see that escalator of ten percent a year. So just so everyone knows why there's that little fire hydrant maintenance line.
Okay. Any further discussion on this budget? We're already done the animal control. We did that. Let's add, we did that, yeah. So Public Works.
Next, the Public Works.
Yeah. A lot of moving parts in Public Works.
And some revenue.
Yes, we've got revenue as well. But I think they've done a pretty good job of holding it as best they can. Any, any particular lines you want to discuss or examine? Okay. Anyone else on Public Works? We good? Commission on Aging.
That bus that they're getting with the grant funding isn't the capital improvement plan only, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any, any concerns? Does that, I know you're, you're good?
Yep.
Okay. Candace, you all right?
Yep.
Health and Welfare and. What's the, H of Humor, what's that say?
I don't know. VNA of Southeastern Connecticut.
So, so this is a nursing, I think it stands for Visiting Nurse Association. So they come and do, I think it's called indigent, indigit, indignant, indigen care?
Indigit.
Indigit.
Okay, whatever that means. I'm a bean counter. So they do that, they do foot clinics, flu vex, flu clinics. They do other things for the, at the senior center, for the seniors, home, like home visits. So it's about a thousand a month. It was running a little higher than that, that's why we put the fifteen in. But just recently, they cut back one of their services. So we were able to realize some savings there.
People partake in these.
Oh, there's a waiting list.
Yeah.
They do, I think one of the things they do, don't they do like toenail clippings and things? And that seems easy for us, but, you know, when you're, you're older and it's flexible or whatever the problem is, that's a, you know, a nice, a nice thing.
It's a point we need a little.
VNA is wonderful, VNA is great.
Yeah, there. Culture Recreation, all right, here we go. Plus the Library. Now where's the breakdown here? So if you look at, I think, towards the back. Yeah, page, really, really want to look at page five, I think, if we can start. And here's where, Kevin was mentioning before, if you look at line fifty-seven, four oh one under Fringe Benefits, we're picking it up for fiscal year twenty-six. So that's an expense that they have, we're picking up now. Town Retirement? Pardon me?
Their, their employees, yeah, their employees are in our pension plan.
Okay, all right.
So they're, a portion of the pension is, you know, they're, since they're a department within it, they're, they're required to pay that contribution. But the towns are like, you know, our proposal is to pick that up.
And the health insurance went up a lot, just like everybody else's.
They're on our health insurance plan.
Yep.
You know, a huge part of any budget is going to be people. But it's seen, technology is overrepresented, I think, in, in a lot of these things. It's like the second biggest one, licensing fees and racing fees and software.
I believe there was an additional one as well for like thirty thousand on there, and that's kind of why there was an adjustment. I, I think there was thirty thousand dollars added in there for Hoopla, I believe.
Yeah, we have this, I know we talked about that.
Oh, yeah, Hoopla.
Hoopla's, Hoopla's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But thirty thousand dollars is, I, I don't know how much it costs to create a software company, so I probably shouldn't talk out of turn, but it just seems like all the licensing and all the programming, all the software is ever increasing its size in our budget.
And then they have licensing on their end too, so.
Yeah, that's true.
It's like buying a printer, the toner. It's like a cellphone, the monthly payment. The cellphone is free, but the payment, yeah. Find a way to get it somewhere. So, I think we had a pretty thorough discussion.
Yeah.
Lisa Thompson's here. All right, we're getting there. Parks and Recreation. We looked at it a little bit before when we started, but looking at the. Part-time season, oh, we talked about that a little bit.
Electricity, is that just because all the electric bills are going up? Is that why electricity went up thirty-two point nine percent?
Yeah. Yeah, I was, in every department.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, it wasn't, they didn't add new equipment, you know.
Yeah.
It was just that charge. Thirty, thirty-two percent is pretty much what you see on your bill.
So that increase to electricity was exactly that. It was relatively flat, and then with, with, looking at the, the town's bills, I knew that was going to be a pain point in the budget, so I talked to Dan and Jerry. We looked at some of the bills and realized the budget probably wasn't going to cover what that should be, so.
What is, on a, on a personal note, what is your usage like compared to last year?
I have solar.
No, no, here.
Electricity?
Yes. Forget the price, what's the usage? Reason I bring that up is I had a fifty-seven percent increase in February to February for two people.
The colder.
And your usage? Oh, I don't know.
I have, I have, I don't have electricity. And, and I, and they go, wow, I don't know. And the month before, they did a, they did a drive-by. My, my meter said they couldn't read it, so they just did an estimated, and a thirteen percent increase. I understand that, that they couldn't get a reading on the drive-by. But for the next month, they come in at fifty-seven percent increase in power, it's two people, nothing's changed. I, I, I'm baffled. So you add that up to the.
Year-over-year?
You and the entire state.
Year-over-year, a month.
You and the entire state, Don, I hear you, we're, we're in trouble.
It's just, I, I have no faith, I have no faith in.
Hey, Don, I think that's a you problem.
I got a you problem. Thank you, Dan, I appreciate it, we're tired.
All right. So.
How much is your electric bill?
Any more comment on Parks and Rec? So now we can turn to Youth and Family Services.
I've got three freetches and mine's two hundred bucks.
And, let's see. Sheriff Herman made a presentation to us, I don't know if there's any.
She did. I, I want to go back to the whole position thing because it's cost neutral, if we just keep it the way that it is. I know that I'm not going to verbalize it the way that they did, but I know that you're talking, you know what I'm talking about as far as those two positions.
Okay, let's do this.
And if you don't, then we can have them come on Wednesday. I can remember those savings or something, rejected savings.
Sorry to interrupt, Candace. When I saw this presentation, I, I was lacking context for, like, how many people are serviced? How many come from the school, how many are adults? I, I don't know, it's probably inappropriate at this point to call her and ask her back, but.
I don't think it's inappropriate, but we are going to be meeting on Wednesday, and I know that they would probably more, be more than willing to come down again and answer any questions that anybody has. Also, probably articulate better than me, the whole difference between those two positions and how it really is a cost-neutral type of thing, where we've already put the money forward, but it's nothing extra on us. And just kind of keep the, keep it the way that it can be, so. I'd like to have them come on Wednesday so we can actually talk about it a little bit more.
I, I wouldn't mind that either, if you want a second motion or something, I'll be happy to do that.
Well, is there any departments?
Yeah.
I don't think we need a motion.
I think it's just a matter of inviting them.
Just invite them, yeah.
Yeah.
That way you can ask.
And the other thing, I'll work with Sandy and create a Zoom link for that meeting, just in case someone, a department can't be here.
That's a good idea.
Because that'd be essentially our last budget meeting.
Yeah.
And I think we're looking at the Board of Ed coming for Wednesday, is that what you said?
Correct.
Possibly.
Potentially.
Potentially. Okay.
All right, so I'll, I'll create a Zoom link, we'll create a Zoom link for the five-thirty and the seven.
And I, I mean, I, I think I have specific questions that I don't want to, like, hit her with right there. I mean, it's numbers and stuff, so could I send questions ahead of time?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Give it to that.
If you don't have her email, Jason, I can give that to you afterwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see. Debt service? I don't think we can reduce that as much as we would like, it is what it is.
Working on it.
Yeah, we are working on it. Well, we should spend a cash capital.
I got no debt.
I think that's about it.
Oh, you have a debt in your book?
Right.
Okay. I will, I'll give you a.
So I think we did a lot tonight and.
Is there, is there an info packet from the Board of Ed?
I don't have anything yet from them.
Okay, because usually we do get something.
Did they email us that?
I have not, I, I email's not up right now, I don't know.
I haven't seen anything.
What was the question?
Board of Ed packet, like budget packet.
You spoke to.
I sent an email earlier this morning. I, I don't know if I heard back, I've been out of the office since three o'clock.
I know they were having meetings.
And I don't know who has town email or not, but they've changed the security protocols. So I had like about a hundred emails. I stopped getting them, I guess, Friday morning or Friday, Saturday night. And when they cleared the, the problem, I mean, it's like I was swamped with emails that I hadn't seen. So if you haven't, if you haven't gotten any new emails since Saturday, then you might be thinking, you might want to see if you, they went to two-factor authentication.
So did you have to do something?
Yeah, it took an hour to figure it out.
Before, before we move to adjourn, I just want to say, I appreciate the hard work of the CIP group for not only putting this all together, but, you know, being here since three o'clock today and now wrapping it up here post-E thirty. Long, long hours, thank you very much.
Yeah, they did a great job, and it's very appreciated. Okay, and I will do a policy for the services to the community. Sandy, make sure I do that tomorrow.
Can I adjourn the meeting, March third, twenty twenty-five, at eight forty-one PM?
I'll second. I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.